All right, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 7:02 on April 1st, 2019. April Fools. So our joke on you is we had to use the small room tonight. They're doing some work in the big room, so that's why we're in here. It's not just to irritate you. So we are not being broadcast live this evening, but we are being videoed, so it will be replayed for anybody who wants to go home and see any of this on television. I don't know why, but if in case you do. And it'll be, obviously, the minutes will be done just like usual, but no one can see us at home right now. So we have a lot of people here for things tonight, and I want to let some people know that there are certain things that are not going to actually be dealt with tonight in case you wish to leave. Those include the hearing E and F, which is 1420 Andover Street, and the 1037-1547, you know, the North Street Andover Street project. Both of those projects have asked to be postponed to our next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I got an update from the surveyor, and we were asking actually because they're going to be going before ConCon to have it for the May meeting after the town meetings, and I think that was still...
Okay, but either way postponed. That's fine. We can deal with that in a second, but I just wanted to let anybody here that was thinking they were going to get to speak. So neither of those two hearings will be held this evening. We won't add anything new to the record. It'll just simply be continued to a meeting in the future, either the next or another one further off. So if you're here for either of those, you don't need to stick around because you're not going to miss anything. The other matter that is not going to be dealt with this evening is in the zoning articles. That is the Vale Street project or request. Hold on, hold on, hold on. So before, basically, the petitioner has requested to have it withdrawn without prejudice, so that's, we won't deal with that tonight during the hearing, and they'll have to withdraw that at town meeting. But on that same topic, just to make sure we're clear, because for some reason, people are getting things in their mailbox saying that we were trying to hide hearings or not tell people. Okay, anyone who put that out, I don't know who it was, I don't care. It's never happened. Every time, no. Every time that there is a zoning article, it comes here. We have a public hearing, like you're all at this evening. Then it goes to town meeting. Nothing is done behind closed doors. Nothing is done secretly. It's not even being put forward by the town. It's someone else is putting it forward. But just like every other article, whether the town does it or a person does it, it's heard here first. We make a recommendation, and then it goes to town meeting. So any, anyone who's implying that something was trying to be done secretly, underhandedly, or any other thing like that was wrong, and to put it out into people's mailboxes claiming that that was true was simply ill-informed at best. So before anybody goes clearing audio, I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. In the future, if the petitioner ever decides to bring this back for another town meeting, the exact same process will be followed. It will end up here for a public hearing. We'll give a recommendation, one way or the other, and it will go to town meeting where everybody will see it right then and there. So just so everybody's clear, that's how this works, whether it's controversial, not controversial, you know. Everybody's in favor, nobody's in favor. It still gets its public hearing here, just like everything else. So I wanted to make sure everybody, because it seems like there's a lot of folks here for that, and I wanted to make sure everybody heard me say that before they went home, if that's what they choose to do.
Thank you, but I'm still confused, and I think there's some people here who are still confused. If you could just explain it in simpler terms, because maybe we're just, we don't understand, because this is new to some of us, and we just want to be part of the process.
So the only way I can explain to you is that there are two ways that something would come up as a zoning change. Either the town, whether it be this board or the selectmen or whatever, would propose a zoning change, or an individual can petition for a zoning change. In either case, it's submitted to the town, and if it's a zoning one, it has to come before this board to get a public hearing, and then the board makes a decision to either recommend adoption or to indefinite postponement, you know, whatever it is that the board feels on this particular article, as we will with all the other articles that are before us tonight. One is proposed by the town. All the rest are being proposed by individuals. So that's how the process works. You wouldn't see it until it's submitted. Once it's submitted, it goes out as a public notice. The zoning articles will be heard. These are the zoning articles. This is the date of the meeting.
And as a representative of the people of the town, which you serve us, would we have the opportunity to come and hear that also and give feedback?
Oh, absolutely. So just so we're clear, so when I say public hearing, there are two types of things that we do here. There are administrative actions which don't have citizen input. They're just things that we take care of that's usually at the beginning of a meeting. Everything else that's a public hearing, whether it's for a, for a special permit or in this case, a zoning article, it's presented, whether it's be, like Mr. Sadwick is here for one that the town is putting forward. There are some people here that are here for the other articles that are individuals. They'll make their presentation. They'll say their piece. The board will make their comments. We'll open it up to public comment, at which point anyone who wants to come up will come up, say their piece, ask questions, get clarifications, whatever it is. Then we'll bring it back to the board. The board will make its recommendation. That's how all zoning articles will work, going forward, now, tonight, and in the past. So if you ever see it come up again, this is the process. You come down. Hopefully, we'll be in the big room. There'll be room for everybody.
What was it canceled?
The petitioner requested to have it withdrawn.
But there was no notification that anything had happened.
I just got it. Like I just got it this evening. That's why it's not, it wouldn't have gone out any other way if we had to wait till we got here to do it, because it wasn't sent in any sooner. So we just, it was literally just handed to me, so.
If it wasn't for that letter, I wouldn't have known it was coming out.
Well, I mean, we'd use the same process for public notification for zoning articles. They're put out as a public notice. It's not...
...before by the board when something was coming up. And nine April, 40 years ago, I got this, and then the board notified all the abutters about the zoning change.
I honestly can't speak to what happened 40 years ago.
But everybody knew about it then. Nobody knew about it now.
Right. So Steve Sadwick, Assistant Town Manager. So for zoning changes, the only requirement under the state law is that a notice needs to be filed in the paper two weeks prior to the planning board's public hearing. When it comes to special permits for subdivisions, the planning board has to set, by state law, has to send out notices to the abutters. So that's, that's the difference here, because again, the planning board is holding this public hearing for zoning articles just to make recommendations, and town meeting ultimately decides whether or not to approve or disapprove. The other ones where it's for a special permit or subdivision, the planning board is making the decision in either saying yes or no to it at that point in time. So that's the difference between the two notices.
Someone else had it. What was the other question?
So just to be sure, this matter will not appear at a town meeting?
No, it'll still appear on the warrant, because we can't withdraw one that's not put forward by the town. The petitioner will have to show up tonight and withdraw it, but it will not have had a public hearing. It wouldn't be able to be acted upon, but we just, we can't pull it off the article. They have to do it, but we're going to make no recommendation tonight. So without the recommendation and the public hearing, it wouldn't be acted upon. It's just, you'll still see it on the warrant, just so you understand. So don't freak out, but it won't have been heard, so there's nothing they can do with it. They have to withdraw artificially there, though. We can't do it for them.
And if they don't withdraw artificially, can it still push forward, or it can't push forward unless there's a recommendation or a non-recommendation?
So in the past, where the planning board has handled it, is the planning board recommendation is that the planning board would recommend to accept the withdrawal from the petitioner, and if the petitioner chooses not to withdraw, then the planning board would recommend denial, because there's, there's really deceitfulness that's at play there. If someone gives you a letter and then shows up at town meeting and says, "I withdraw my withdrawal." So that's how the planning board has handled it in the past.
Okay. Do we know who the petitioner is?
There was only, there was a name listed on the submission, right?
Yep. Information.
About that letter where he withdrew it, is his name on there?
Well, it was, it came from their attorney, so.
The bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, is you get to vote at town hall, at town meeting, to approve it or disapprove it as well, not just our recommendation. You vote at town meeting to decide yes or no on that zoning change, not just us.
No, yeah.
Not if it's withdrawn, but I'm saying if it does come up...
Okay, just again, so we're not confusing the issue, though. With it not being heard tonight, if it were, it's still going to appear on the article, on the, on the warrant, but if they don't withdraw it, the recommendation from the planning board is for indefinite postponement. So it wouldn't, it's not going to go forward at town meeting that way, but we can't pull it off the ballot. In the event they bring it in and go through the whole process, yes, what Mr. Patalia said is you'd still be the ones voting for it at town meeting, up or down, if it got that far. Okay, so there's two pieces. The planning board makes a recommendation. Town meeting has to make the final decision, either way.
So what paper is this actually posted in?
Town Crier.
Division of the petitions.
What's that?
Division of the petitions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Diana Doherty was the petitioner. Diana Doherty is the name listed.
Other than the newspaper, does it get posted on to like a website or something?
It's on the towns, right? In the list?
Yeah, the notice. I don't know if it's on the town website, but it's usually...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, it's, the town clerk would have it posted at the town clerk's office.
So you basically, for anything, not just for this, but for anything you wanted to know and information on, you either have to buy the newspaper or come here physically to read the notice, but you can't put it on like the town website?
For zoning changes, yeah, we don't...
We can't actually send a mail to the people who are actually...
We wouldn't, we're not presenting this.
No, no, all we're, look, all we're doing is following what state law tells us to do, which is for zoning, for zoning articles to come to a planning board public hearing, it has to be posted in the newspaper. That's the way the law reads.
But that's the minimum. The town, in the interest of its own citizens, could require these people to actually notify the impacted people. We as, we could put that as part of the requirement to do this, because it exceeds the state law.
We, well, no, we could, we could, we could probably put it on the website if we knew. It's not, it's not a legal requirement. It's not a legal requirement. Right, it would be nice, and we can do that. I just said, we can do that.
Again, as well as the fact that what is posted, though, is our agendas for all our meetings are posted for planning board, which this would have been included in. So you would have seen that we were doing the zoning articles listed on our agenda, which is always on the website when our meetings are coming up. So you see it on the little calendar, and then you'll see the agenda, just like the board of selectmen have theirs. So, other questions?
So as of now, this is kind of squashed until sort of the notice, but we really need to go online, check the town website, check Tom Cryer like consistently, because it doesn't seem like it really wants...
Well, no. In the, there's only, there's only two times a year when you'd be able to do this. You'd either be when we have what we like to call special town meeting, which happens every year, so it's not really special, but that's fine. There's that one, or town meeting. It can only happen two times a year, in which case, prior to town meeting, we hold our hearings for zoning changes that are being requested. They're not, they're not on a rolling basis. They don't happen just randomly all throughout. What's that requirement? Is it two weeks before?
Yeah.
So two weeks before the warrant closes, we have to have our...
The warrant's already closed.
Not closed, I'm sorry. Two weeks before town meeting, sorry. Two weeks before town meeting, we have to have our public hearing. So we're not talking about, this isn't going to be done in, you know, February. It doesn't make sense.
Correct.
Since May, it won't be voted on.
It would have to be resubmitted.
And then that'll be it, so maybe next year, maybe?
Correct.
It could possibly be October special town meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But it would be advertised, it would be advertised for September public hearing.
Right. Same process, basically six months apart is the most often.
Can we go in and take down trees in here?
All right, well, I'm not, we're going to devolve into too much here. That's not really for here.
I've been putting on Daskin Road and the highway side into my backyard now.
I know, I understand, but that's a different issue. We're not going to deal, we're not going to deal with what can or can't happen on the property here tonight. This was just about the hearing for a zoning request change. I just want to make sure everybody understood that it isn't being heard tonight because it's being requested we withdrawn. Any issues you have with the property or not with the property are separate from what's going on this evening. Okay, so we're not going to, I don't want to get into that. Any other questions regarding the warrant article?
When you say that it's legally noticed in the paper, I just want people to understand. We're not talking about an article or something that's going to be written in the paper, but you have to actually look in the sort of teeny, we don't see the crazy town seal.
And the...
Small...
Because someone sees that off the letter on the bill, obviously. Otherwise, if I didn't get the letter, I wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be here, right? So you might not like that, but it does work.
Kind of funny they canceled it at the last moment.
Let's get you guys in here.
All right, so with that, I will take a two-minute recess, just because I have a feeling there's going to be people who look to clear out of here right now, and no one will hear anything if we keep going without taking a minute to let people to head out if they like. So with that, we'll adjourn for two minutes, let people clear out if they like. Good evening.
The vote has to be taken by the board decides to release the bond, etc. So we're here to formally ask for that.
All right. Mrs. Delaney?
I'm all set.
Mr. Fattaya?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Ryder?
All set.
Mr. Fowler? Chair is all set as well. So with that, uh, entertain a motion for, uh, recommendation of street acceptance. We did that already. Yeah. We just didn't do this at the same time. We probably should have.
Uh, motion to, uh, approve the-
Street acceptance?
Street acceptance.
All right. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Moving on to agenda item B three, which is one Radcliffe Road special permit extension Now just remind everybody when they come up to the table, we'll ask you to speak up because the mics is sort of around. We want to make sure it gets picked up. Um, if you have any problems, we'll send them up to the- all right. Very good.
Chairman Steven, I've been here in a while. Just a quick background. I represent the owners of one Radcliffe Road. We bought the building five years ago. They can improve it, uh, went through several leasing prospects and ultimately we've signed a, uh, long-term lease for, excuse me, L3 Technologies to Project Tenet. I have consolidated Wilburn and their Wilmington offices here in Houston. So we were very happy with that. Hope you like as well. In the interim, we, uh, came to you several years ago for, uh, for expanded parking, special permit for expanded parking and conservation commission approval as well. We received those approvals. We extended the conservation commission once for three years to January 2021. And your special permit expires April 6th. So we're here asking you for a two-year, two-year extension on that, on that special permit. That way you'll have time to discuss with the town, you know, their future plans. Here in Spain, moving other offices into this location, this is their headquarters location for this, uh, for this facility in the Boston area. So, you know, additional parking could become very important. To date, we haven't done anything with the additional parking. We've just approved the existing parking.
Very good. Anything else?
No.
All right. Mr. Fowler?
I'm all set.
Uh, Mr. Ryder?
All set, thank you.
Mrs. Delaney?
All set.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. Uh, with the people moving into that facility right now, what is the percentage of that complex being completely rented?
It's 100%.
Yes.
Probably the whole building.
Awesome. Great.
Yeah, it's great.
Vacant for a long time.
It did go a while, yes.
Yeah, so glad to hear it. So, all set, Mr. Chairman?
All right. Chair is all set as well. He, uh, echoes what Mr. Fattaya just said. It's right, nice to see the building being occupied and if in the future that the parking becomes needed, I think that's probably a good thing as well. But I have no problem with the extension. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to reissue the extension for two years.
All right. A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Good luck.
Good luck.
Moving on to agenda item C, 25 Cursage Street, uh, family suite special permit.
B four?
What's that?
That's the Walgreens with B four.
Oh, yeah, we have Walgreens.
Oh, I'm sorry. B four. I have a B four. My apologies. How did I miss B four? Sorry. All right. What are we doing here?
John, I've seen Sadwick here.
All right. So we'll have Mr. Sadwick come up and he'll, uh, run through, uh, agenda item B four.
The record is Steve Sadwick, this is the town manager. Walgreens on Main Street and South Street was permitted by the planning board back in 1998. Um, and back at that time, there was a lot of concern by the butters on South Street as far as headlights from the parking lot shining into their property and also with the parking lot lights themselves. So the planning board back then spent a lot of time working on the lights and getting the lights to a point where it was acceptable to the neighbors. The landscaping seemed to work at the time. Um, and what's happened recently, probably within the last two years, was that they went in and redid their, um, parking lot lights, converted them to LED lights and shields were removed on those lights, which has caused concern by butters on South Street. So they contacted the selectman's office, town manager got involved, town council, senior town council's been involved. And we spent, um, some money to go through a lighting analysis and found that according to light standards and zoning bylaw, there technically was no spillage, but the butters still had some concerns. So we're working this two primes right now. Um, town, senior town council and myself are in contact with the lighting contractor to try and get the shields back on those parking lot, um, light posts. And then as far as the landscaping was concerned, they had, um, some spruce landscape trees that were put in there. And what's happened over the years with plowing and everything else is that the lower branches had really lost their effectiveness from a buffering standpoint. So what was provided, I think, to the board was a proposal by their landscaper to put in, um, the green giant arvivites. And they're looking at 50 of them, 10 feet tall on installation. The, those arvivites can grow up to 40 feet high. And if you get a good fill on those, they'll probably do a better job of, um, preventing the lighting from hitting the house across the street. The proposal that you have in front of you was run by the butter and his concern was so long as it's shielding the, the lights and he did mention that they were promised the wall is green back in 98. Um, in my back and forth with the landscaper, they do believe that you get this wall is green at that location. So it really has an impact on the planning board's approval from the landscape plan. And they wanted to make sure that the planning board was aware of this and okay with it before they gave the okay to Walgreens to make the change on the landscape inside.
Okay. All right. Um, Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you think the, uh, 40-foot-high tree, Stephen, is not overkill or was, can we do something that's standard for that?
Saying that's how high they could grow.
Yeah.
Um, these, these would obviously have to be maintained and the more you, you know, trim it at the top, the more you're going to focus on the fill that's going to occur at the lower, the lower level. Those spruce trees, I mean, I don't know if anybody's been out there recently at that Walgreens, but you can see right through them.
Yeah. Okay. All set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Ryder?
Uh, thank you. I agree that, you know, they're not maintained. I think we should look at setting a height that no, no higher than that will make them, uh, maintain their maintenance on it. Also, they'll need to do something with their plow. If they don't, we'll be back here. And two years, the bottom branch is going to be killed again. So they need to come up with a one location for their snow as well as, um, set a height no higher than 25 feet. Uh, I'll leave that to, you know, recommendation of the landscaper that, you know, I don't want to kill the tree by cutting it too low, but I think we need to maintain.
Sure.
Yep. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Mr. Sadwick for putting this, uh, bringing this ahead and then taking care of it. I love that, very good to, uh, because as the, some of the people might not realize, there are sometimes landscaping proposals they get that die and, or they don't, uh, they don't put in what they're supposed to put in. And it's almost like pulling teeth to get them done. I mean, we have three on the agenda right now and we're getting to the point, we plant some bushes or go to floor. You know, that's about it. So, but I, it's, it's a pleasure, Stephen, to have this done that way. And, uh, but other than that, I'm all set.
Again, I can't add too much from Mr. Fowler. I mean, he'd be the only one here that was present when this was approved, so.
I don't know.
But no, I, I, obviously I drive by that area all the time too and I, I would agree. They obviously have quite a bit of, um, you know, it's been since 98, so it's probably time to, to deal with what they have there and what needs to be there. Um, you know, and obviously if, you know, they're cooperative, then this isn't a big problem. We don't get to the point that Mr. Fowler just mentioned. We, you know, hopefully this is something that they'll take care of because they realize they need to. Uh, to Mr. Ryder's point as well, it's pointless though if they don't make other arrangements to make sure they're not going to cause the exact same problem or we're back doing this again needlessly in the future. Um, you know, they want to be good neighbors. I think it's in their best interest to agree and then to also maintain it, um, so that we're not doing this over and over again. So, but other than that, uh, I guess we'll take a sort of an informal motion from the board to, um, support the efforts to deal with the landscaping at Walgreens. Does that sound?
Sounds great.
All right. So I have a mo-, uh, motion made in second. It all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sadwick. It's not a public hearing. Sorry. I mean, we got a lot of stuff on the agenda, but I'll let you. You're the most about it. All right. We'll take one. Come on up.
I was also the one that was here at the meeting back in 98.
There you go.
Uh, yes, we were promised at Walgreens.
We just need your name and your address.
My name is Mike Wink, 364 South Street. The guy that has the light shining in his window until midnight. The bushes would probably take care of the headlights. We were promised bushes all along the abutment, along the property to prohibit the headlights from shining across the street. The bushes that were put in were not what was promised. They were very low bush. The headlights shine right over the top of them because they're very short. So this new plan for the bushes that they have, whatever the height they are, would be great. I just want to make sure that these bushes will cover that height from two foot to five or six feet, whatever the headlights are going to be. Not just go a couple of bushes. You get what it said was a couple of bushes. I want to make sure that it's effective for doing what it's supposed to do. Not just a couple of bushes on the plan. I saw the plan. It doesn't really have where they start, where they end, where they're supposed to be, height at the ground, just a couple of pictures of some pretty green bushes, which is nice. That's all fine and dandy. That would be for the bushes, for the headlights shining across the street. The other thing I have a problem with is their lighting. The lighting poles in that parking lot are not to code. I would like to see the report that says they are. They're 30 feet tall. And we all know if you look through the town zoning bylaws, 20 feet is the limit. Those are 30-foot light poles. You're not going to get any trees or bushes to cover out the 30-foot lights that shine in the second story of my windows. Second floor bedroom windows. I have lights. I can make shadow puppets in the house. Keep my kids up at all hours of the night till midnight when they turn them off. It's been going on for years. Three years since they just installed the lights. They did have some shields that block most of it. They took them down and then told me, "Be it, not going to do anything." I did go to the building department and they gave them a formal complaint three years ago, which I still have. It's registered at your building department for all to see. And they were supposed to correct this condition. This has been three years now. Still nothing. And I don't think a couple of bushes are going to block out 30-foot lights. And there is a lot of spillage. You can read the newspaper in my front lawn at night. You can go by there right now, 11 o'clock at night, you can go by. You can read the newspaper in my front lawn. And if you think that's not spillage, I'd like to see your report because I don't think it's true. So bring forth your report.
So the second point on the lighting is that we're still working with them. Walgreens doesn't contract with local lighting companies. So we've been dealing, senior town council has been dealing with Walgreens attorney and the lighting contractor that Walgreens is using to correct the problem has been in contact with me and they're supposed to be out in the field shortly. I just don't have the date. I have been in communication as of last week with the lighting contractor. They're working on things through Walgreens. Town council is working through things with Walgreens attorney there.
Okay. And as, as of this point, at least from the information you have, what they have, other than it may not be what we want, are they currently, other than the, the landscaping, that's a separate issue, but from the lighting, are they currently in violation of the special permit that they got in 98? Or we do not think so, but we're trying to work with them anyways?
There's two different plans. One that shows the lighting at 20 feet and then there's a plan that I think may show it at a, at a greater height too.
All right. So maybe, again, in, in trying to goose this along.
Yeah.
It would probably be in Walgreens' best interest that we don't have to decide which of those is-
Right.
-correct.
And so, Bill?
Less they make us do so.
And what I would like to do is is once, um, once Walgreens has the proposed lighting solution, is actually come back to the planning board again, just so that you're aware. It would, it just makes sense that this board is aware of any type of adjustments that's occurring on this side of the plan inside.
I mean, I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, I know there's a couple of houses on that side, but I mean, obviously they're, they're affecting a couple of houses more so-
Right.
-than any, any place else on their property. I would think that it would, again, would be in their best interest to try to do whatever's necessary on the side that they're having the most impact, lest we have to go back in and tell them that they have to change their entire lighting everywhere on their property.
Yep.
So again, I would probably, uh, extend to them that, that comment that it would, you know, I don't see what would be the issue in, the shielding needs to obviously be more on the side where it's affecting people. It would make sense for them to do so, especially since I don't know what reason they'd have to want to be lighting overly on one side than they need to be. So, um, Mr. Fowler?
Mr. Sadwick, do either of those sets of plans show the shielding on the lights that was put on?
They, I mean, they may, one of them may show that.
I mean, it sounds like from what you said, if I'm not, if I'm, if it's basically they're saying, "We changed the kind of lights, so we didn't think we needed the shielding anymore."
Right.
I mean, that's basically what it was. So again, I think, again, probably not in their best interest to force us to have to go back and make judgments on what was meant in 1998 today. If they want to do it that way, I suppose they could. And I'm sure we'd, we're more than happy to tell them what we think they need to do. But it'd probably be easier for them to do it with you in this process.
Right. Like I said, it is a two-prime process. They have two different contractors that they're working with and the landscape just happened to break quicker than the lighting did. So it kind of been on parallel tracks.
Well, it seems like to be the time of year for that to be dealt with anyway, so. All right. Anybody else with anything?
I have one question. Uh, is there a timeframe? Can we give them a deadline?
Well, the land, so landscaping is going to occur this month, which was why-
Okay. What was the lighting, you mean?
The, the lighting, um, I just talked with Charles this afternoon and he's expecting to hear back from their attorney sometime this week. So in my conversation last week with the lighting contractor, um, they're supposed to get Walgreens within the next week or two to get in touch with us.
So one, one other question. I mean, I know the, the resident mentioned that the lights are on until midnight. I don't know them to be open any later than 10 or 11 o'clock, right? On any given night? So they may want to, again-
I think they have 24 hours.
Not that one.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we look at the special permit?
Yeah.
And plot out and see if it has to be modified to go along with the times of their, their-
And I have no idea what it says. I mean, it may have something in there. I have no idea. But again, like I said, I think it, it would seem to be in Walgreens' best interest to cooperatively deal with this with you while you're trying to, rather than make us have to do it. So, all right.
Mr. Chairman, can we keep this resident in the loop as well, as far as keeping him informed?
I think you've given contact, correct?
Did most of the information come from the selectmen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So we can keep him in the loop and just so that, you know, he's got issues and I, I wouldn't want to live there myself with those conditions. So if, you know, we're doing something positive, hopefully it'll resolve the issue hopefully sooner than later.
Okay. I also have a copy of the order of non-compliance from the building inspector. This is the, the document that I was going on. This is three years old now. I don't know when the loop is closed on that. That would be for the light.
Well, again, I mean, that's part of what's being dealt with, so.
And more than welcome to give that to me. I'll look, I'll look for it while we're not busy.
They have it. It's three years old now.
Yep.
And the, the hours of operation and the permit, they'll be fine. I believe they were, if they closed at 10, they were open until 11. That was fine. They just started leaving the lights on later.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Sadwick, thank you. All right. That, that ends our administrative actions. So now we will move on to agenda item C, um, again, which was 20 Cursage Street Family Suite Special Permit. Do we have a motion to waive the public hearing? A motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Are you, are you guys here for that? Okay. Come on, I'm down.
I'm down. I'll see. It should be Parker.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. All right. If you'd state your names to the record, the floor will be yours.
Parker, Malti, and we will hold 25 Cursage Street.
Just had to keep on the, uh, check.
All right. Floor is yours.
I'm here because of special permit to put them in last week and turn home. And this is the process and following, so that's why I'm here.
All right. Anything to add on the specifics?
This is what the compliance is, that the builder of the property is supposed to do. I'm just trying to follow through with that.
All right.
I guess it's a change of use.
Yeah, you're not actually building anything. You're modifying what's there, but it becomes a family suite as a result.
No square.
Right. That's so, that's why it's here. But the numbers still have to work out, so that's fine. All right. So you have nothing else? We'll start with Mr. Fowler.
I'm all set. I can review this, uh, one question I have. How many additions are on this house?
I bought the house last February, so I think they give you information. It looks like about five, the way the house was built. It's got angles going everywhere.
But as long as, but, I mean, what you need is for a legal family suite and that's what you're going to do and that's what the building inspector will work to that point. So good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a question. On the application, you said you're going to add a second kitchen. You know, I mean, and this may be to all of us on the board and Mr. Sadwick as well and, and the, and the statement about the same thing. It just seems like we should have more on the application identifying, not, not on your end, no, on our end as a, as a-
Very big application.
Well, it's, it is in, in some way, but I mean, I just thought we should maybe have more on the application as far as what they're looking for, two bedrooms, so many square footage, so forth and so on. Just, and then just to clarify that, so that when we do get the plans, maybe we as a board, it'll make it easier for us to understand and go through it and, and decipher it as well, so. But, uh, other than that, on my end, as far as, um, if this goes, and you're on Sua, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that has to be done and, um, uh, that's it. I'm all set. We love the idea of a family suite, keeping the family there and all that, so, um, I'm all for it, so.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I, I can't find any questions or anything wrong with what they're trying to do. And again, lewis, that type of thing.
Very good. Mr. Ryder?
All set. Thank you.
All right. The chair is all set as well. I'll echo again what Mr. Fattaya said in that it is sort of a somewhat informal process the way these go. We're, we're very much in favor of them. I think that's a byproduct of why the, the, the information on the application is light. So I think he's right. We're redoing the whole zoning by, it'd probably be best if we had a little more information on there. That doesn't really affect you guys. It's more of a housekeeping matter for us. Um, you know, we've gotten a lot more of these more recently. It's, it's sort of, we have one per meeting, it seems, uh, lately, which, you know, it's fine. We have no problem with that. Again, we, we want to encourage families to, to stay together and there's nothing wrong with that. But, um, from a housekeeping stand, it's probably easier if we have more rather than less, but that's fine. So, uh, it is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this, please come forward. Going once, twice, all right? Right back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right. Motion made to close the hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. It all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. As to the family suite special permit as requested, do I have a-
Motion to approve the family suite as designed and with approval from the building inspector.
So a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed. Motion carries. Good luck. You guys are off to see the building inspector.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Good luck.
Moving on to agenda item E, I'm sorry, D. These are the zoning article reviews that we're doing our public hearing on now. And we will start with article, and again, these numbers are not in stone, right? If things happen, they can change. These are our numbers we're working with tonight. The warrant may reflect their numbers being slightly different, but the language will be consistent, just for anybody who needs to know. So, our first article is Article 35.
What's that?
That's, isn't that yours?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Mr. Plunkett, I think he, I think Steve's first.
Yeah.
It may help, if you just kind of read the caption of the article.
All right, so, on our notice, we have, it just says article here, but for our purposes, it's Article 35 in our paperwork, to see if the town will vote to change the town of Tuxbury zoning map, assesses map, oh, see, that's why, I think that's why. So I'm gonna read it off this one.
It's just out of order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how would-
So-
Which one is it on here?
It's the last one.
This here?
On this.
This here?
Yeah.
So, okay, so, so we have taken them out of order, but, all right, from one list, but, okay, so, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to add a new section 5290 to allow for off-premises signs, electronic message boards, and billboards along with, along the interstate highways in accordance with state and federal regulations."
This article, this is submitted by the board of selectmen, is an exact duplicate of what was submitted in the last town meeting. And I know that the question comes up every time there's an article that's brought back, as far as whether or not the planning board needs to make a finding of material change. And, people get that confused a lot, when you look at the way that 48 is written, in section five, it talks about amendments to zoning, and in that, in that instance, the planning board needs to make a finding, or the planning board, needs to recommend in its final report whether or not it approves or recommends adoption of the article. When it comes to the special permits, that's where you have to find that there's been a material change in a special permit that is brought back before the board. So, if it's untied, or if it's withdrawn, the board needs to make that finding, when you're acting as a special permit granting authority, and zoning changes, it's just a matter of making, making your recommendation, you don't have to make the finding.
All right. Did you want to-
So the article is exactly the same from last town meeting, it's basically to allow the board of selectmen to act as a special permit granting authority for billboards that would be along Route 38, or, or not Route 38, take that guy.
Wait, hold on, wait, before we go any further, let the record reflect that that was a missp- misspo-
Yes, very clear, it is not Route 38, it is Interstate 93 or Interstate 495, and it has to be on commercial industrial property or office research property.
Okay. All right, so we'll start with Mr. Frataya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually am in favor of this article. I like what it's, what it could do for the town as far as some revenue income and revenue stream on a, on a yearly basis, so, I'm all set with it.
Mr. Fowler.
Likewise, I'm all set.
Mr. Ryder?
All set, I think you stated, one of the biggest questions was Route 38 last year. Yeah, that, I think if you start off by saying this is not allowed on Route 38, I think you will have much more support. I'm all set, I do support, thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set.
All right. Again, since we're doing it exactly as before, I supported it the last time, I have no reason to change my mind this time. I'll, again, echo that, yeah, again, I'll echo kind of what Mr. Ryder said, was that I think there was some confusion at town meeting last time. Hopefully that will be clearer this time, as well as the potential benefits to the town from an economic standpoint for these, for the low impact that they think they would have. The economic benefit to the town is potentially significant over the course of the time the billboards would be there. And if, again, if we don't do it, you know, one of our neighbors is going to, and they're gonna be the ones reaping the money, and you're not gonna really know whether or not it's in our town or their town. So, I, for those reasons, but again, to be consistent, I will say, again, I'm not thrilled with the idea that we are not granting authority for this, because that's what we do. However, as I said last time, in this limited example, because the board of selectmen also have to come up with an agreement with the people doing the, the billboard, I can live with the fact that it's all being handled in one place for that reason, because they do have to come up with the deal that governs the billboard. So, again, for consistency's sake, that's what I said last time, so I'll say it again this time. Okay? So with that, I will open it up to the public, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this warrant article?
I'm just curious how that-
Uh, nope, you gotta come up to the, and give your name and address.
John Norton, Bay Street, Tuxbury. Just curious how that billboard provides income to the town.
So, Mr. Sad, will you give an example? I mean, obviously, it's not cast in stone, this is, as you did before, with the example of the one in Stonem, I think was the one used.
So what happens, I'm sorry, I can speak to the board. So what happens is, is that during the permitting process, a development agreement is reached with the billboard provider, and in that, and Stonem is a very good example, where they have two billboards, but the one that was permitted and the BJ's parking lot, I think it's $50,000 a year that the town is receiving upwards over a 20-year period, I believe it is. So, you know, that's why the discussion was to keep this with the board of selectmen, because development agreements are usually executed with the board of selectmen. But that's, that's about the impact.
Okay, and if, again, we did it over the last time, the, the amount changed year to year, so in the first year-
It was an escalator.
And the escalator, in that example, got to what at the end of the agreement? Ballpocked?
I think it was five grand every year, over 20 years, so, I'm not that quick on the math.
That's fine, but it started at 50?
Yeah.
That'd be a hundred grand.
Yeah, very, very good.
All right, so.
Anthony Danpolo, Bradford Road. My question is, any money, if, once this goes through, if it does go through, any money that's collected, is that going to a general fund, or is it directed towards one particular funding area for the town? Is there specific, will that money be earmarked for something, or would it just be like, hey, we have this extra money, let's do this?
It's not in, it's not in the article. I usually wouldn't put that into a bylaw, that's something that's negotiated at the development agreement point, so, I really can't answer that with specifics.
So, on a case-by-case basis?
Case-by-case basis.
I think one of the other things that I know came up, or was a question or concern, was that if these are permitted, there's basically a limit, because of the restrictions of how many they could possibly be, in the places in which they'd fit. Because I think there was some concern that folks thought, oh, we're gonna have 100 of these, which isn't possible if you actually look at what's written, but I don't know if everybody got that. So if you could just speak a little bit to, you know, the amount of areas that actually this could go, and once they're in, the limitations of what would result.
Right, so if you look at the, if you look at the property that abuts the two interstates, there's approximately 20 properties that are heavy industrial, office research. But then when you start narrowing it down, because there's other, not only in our bylaw, but there's also requirements through the outdoor advertisement board, through the state, as far as how far away they have to be from ramps, and they have to be abutting other commercial property that actually has businesses that are operating. So it starts knocking the number down, and it's probably less than 10 locations that could occur on either of those two interstates.
But then the other piece was, once one's in, then you can't put one right next door to it.
Right.
That was the other thing. So, once one's located, now it wipes out a whole more, a whole nother chunk of properties that no longer would be eligible to have one. So you're not gonna end up with 10, because there are 10 properties it could fit on, it won't work that way. Again, just, again, for more information, because I think some of those things were the things that were confusing at town meeting last time. Any other questions, comments, or concerns on this article? Seeing none, bring it back to the board, what's that?
So Stephen, probably about two signs total.
That would be my guess.
I guess, okay.
Not, without, not in stone, but that's-
Right, right, I'm just guessing.
Ballpock, right, okay.
One for 93 and one for 495, probably, right? Possibly.
93 would be a challenge.
No, no.
93 would be a little challenge.
Yeah, it's only one spot there, right? I think it's-
Yeah, so there, three along 495, possibly.
Mm-hmm.
Max.
Good. All right, all set. Okay, with that, what is the pleasure of the board on this article?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right, motion on this article. Motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all is opposed, motion carries. So, as to the article itself, what is the board's recommendation?
Motion to support.
Recommended adoption, all right. So you have a motion made to recommend adoption of this article, I have a second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, and we're settled, so we will move on to what is our, Article 36, and that's the one I started to read before. Um, this one, right? So now we're in order?
Yes, we are, so that's the gentleman.
So, yeah, so, "To see if the town will vote to change the town of Tuxbury zoning map, assesses map 10, Lot 36, 50 Kittredge Avenue, from heavy industrial to heavy industrial one." And the proponent for this is Mr. Andella.
And, um, this is like the summary.
It's like, right.
Yeah. It's a short one.
There's a little more here, but. Gentlemen, once you're squared away, if you just give your names for the record, then the floor will be yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is David Plunkett, I represent James Andella, opponent for this man, for the court. Before we begin, I'd like to come up with, I remember Walgreens.
Mr. Fowler. Mr. Plunkett is reminiscing with you about Walgreens.
Very well.
All right, all right, floor is yours.
This is a proposal for possibly Kittredge Street, Kittredge Road, and Kittredge Avenue, I had my first two choices wrong. It's a 1.87 acre parcel of land. Mr. Andella has handed out copies of the actual view of what's there in terms of the surrounding property. You've got Walmart on one side, you've got the penny junkyard to the other side, that is clearly is an isolated location at the back of that street. And therefore, when you look at the intent of the town, when we adopted the HI-1, was to recognize the fact that there, there is an opportunity for businesses that do the automotive repair, and that it didn't make sense to just have a blanket, you know, cleansing of the town of that type of activity. That the intent of was to say, okay, look, if we find these locations that make sense, make sense in that it's not right along Route 38, the full view of all the people going down that, you know, main street corridor, and that, you know, that we would have a situation where it would allow flexibility for the property owner to have an increased potential for business on their site. You know, in this situation here, we've got a parcel that already has a building in existence, a 9,600 square foot structure. Again, you've got this isolated area that the surrounding site, you know, it certainly would not be, you know, incompatible with what's around it. And as with anyone in business today, the reality is, it's difficult. Competition is tough, and you need to have as much flexibility as possible to be able to stay in business, do business. You know, the town is looking for economic growth and development in the town, this makes sense in that it would be an opportunity to expand the potential use of that area, that would be a use that would be very compatible with the location, and it would be compatible with the intent of the adoption of the HI-1 zone, you know, relative to all the conditions that you find at this location. And basically, that, that's, that's the proposal.
All right. All right, with that-
I'm sorry, currently it is heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial, right.
And, and as it stands right now, the only difference between the HI and the HI-1 is that there are two uses in heavy industrial that are permitted uses of right, and that they become, you know, uses only by special permit, and then there is the, the automotive component, which is a no in the heavy industrial, which then becomes a use, so again, a use only by special permit, so it's not a permitted use of right, it's only after the application is submitted, or the purview of the planning board to determine whether that, the specific proposal makes sense for that location.
Okay. So, again, just before I open it up, just, and to summarize that point, the change ultimately results in the loss of two by right uses that become approvable only here by the board, with the pickup of the automotive use as, again, it has to be approved by the board, but it's something that you wouldn't be able to do in the other. So, you lose something, get something, in all cases, the result is, it has to come to the board to be approved, whereas two out of those three things would not, if it stayed as it is. Does that sound accurate?
Yes, the, the specific items, the retail sale of alcoholic beverages goes from yes, and the actual permitted use of right in HI to a special permit only through the planning board, and also retail sales, not elsewhere where set forth, which is a permitted use of right in the HI district, becomes a special permit planning board. And then the motor vehicle light services, motor vehicle general body repair goes from no to a special permit before the planning board.
Very good. All right, so with that clarification, we'll start with Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. I, I believe, I'll hold off till the end, I had a question, I believe, Mr. Fowler was checking Mr. Sadik on something, on question whether that is considered spot zoning by pinpointing the question on this, so.
I'm thinking the answer's gonna come back, no, but we'll wait.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so, we'll go to Mr. Delaney.
Well, first of all, does anybody know what kind of operation they're gonna put in there? Do you know what you're gonna actually put in that spot?
Well, the-
Obviously, just automotive.
Yeah, automotive repair. So it'd be the type of thing that, I know, in talking with Mr. Andella, he, you know, his indication is that it was, be a site that there might be some automotive repair shops that are along the Route 38 corridor, that might be looking to get off of that main, you know, thorough feeling this would be a good location for that.
Okay, do you, when you say automotive repair, does that mean there's a body shop going in there?
I think that that would be under repair, but again, that's, it's just-
Yeah, I mean, I think we discussed it before, that would be one of the uses that would be allowed.
Yeah.
It would be allowed.
In that category. Again, under special permit from us, but-
And the one other question I have, Steve, around here, around that unit, is there any houses located in that area? Is there any residential spaces being used in that area, other than-
The immediate area?
Yeah, other than the junkyard?
There is-
If you look at that map I gave you.
Yes.
There's a paper street on two sides, and then off Kittredge on Lot 22 is the house. And then through the woods on 15 is the house, like across the paper tree, across the swamp.
You know, I'm just kinda concerned that, you know, the people that live in that area, if it's that type of operation, unlike an auto water repair or so forth, the noise, the noise level will be incredible.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is currently heavy industrial right now, it's not residential, it's heavy industrial, and again, it's a fairly good-sized parcel land, too. It's 1.87 acres. Again, part of the permitting process certainly would, I imagine, would bring up questions of proper, you know, buffering between any adjoining property or anything in the area. And, you know, again, you do have, if you look at, you know, Walmart is in operation right behind it, you got the junkyard right next door, that does, currently has an auto body spot in operation, so this would be further away from the residential area, and would be subject to the, you know, the parameters of review of the planning board to put into place proper rules and regulations or conditions for any, any improvement that might be brought coming.
I'm all set. Good, Steve. All right, we'll come back, Mr. Ryder, you all set now?
Uh.
No, he's not. We're gonna go to Mr. Frataya.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I don't have any problems with-
Not bad.
Any problems with the, considering the fact that whatever does get planned there has to come back in front of us for our approval and, and so forth, and looking at whatever he does want to do there, if he does develop it as well, so I have no problem at this point.
All right, Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My immediate question was, I think David will understand this, spot zoning is a term that's been used too loosely in, not only this state, but other states, but it, it's sometimes says a small lot in a bigger, in a bigger area. I can remember when, not to belabor this, but I can remember when we were doing our best to get the land at the end of South Street adjacent to Route 93 zone, and with the funds, and we almost had them, and it was like, like 100 acres. Someone said to us, that's spot zoning. Well, this is 1.87 acres, and that was 100, and that didn't hold water. So that's my only question. In your opinion, Dave, you were, Mr. Andella's attorney, what is your answer to that?
I mean, first off, I would hope that it wasn't a determination, a 100-acre parcel was spot zoning.
Yeah, it wasn't a determination, it was a question.
Yeah, I would certainly not believe that 100 acres, awesome. I mean, my feeling would be that, you know, HI-1 is basically, almost like a component of the H1, HI district, that you have somewhat of a uniformity of underlying intent, and so you're not changing anything. Spot zoning is typically something which you drastically alter the uses and operations that can be put on a parcel of land that's totally different and distinct from what might have been there, or what's going on with the properties around it. Again, we're dealing with HI, HI-1, very few differences, and it's still industrial use. You know, when they call it heavy industrial or heavy industrial one, it's still industrial use. So I, I would feel very comfortable in saying that, my bet would be that this is not spot zoning.
And that's why Mr. Andella has you as his attorney, and that's why I ensure you, David, you're on the planning board, we're on the one family.
When they were taking care of Walgreens.
That's it, I'm all set.
All right, Mr. Ryder?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, so-
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. So the one that I'll say again, because we just went on to that point, I mean, it is an odd sort of topic, this spot zoning, because, you know, if you have two small lots and don't have anywhere near this acreage, you won't call it spot zoning just because you have two lots. It's a really weird thing, but again, it's not really for us to say that, again, because if that becomes an issue, that's going to be somebody who comes at you and that becomes an issue between you and whoever that is, that they claim it's spot and then you're going to have to deal with it. The only other thing I'll say is, just because we get into a little trouble with this, it is important, I think, for us to discuss the possible uses that can be used there. But I don't want it to sound like we're trying to nail down exactly what it'll be used for only because we're dealing only with the zoning at this point. We won't deal with what's going there specifically until, unless and until a special permit is put before us, at which point then we'll deal with it like we do all special permits and treat it on as, you know, as presented basis. It's something I think petitioners get into a little bit of trouble with at town meeting, is they come in with something that looks like it's the done deal and that's what it's going to be. When that's not really the case, it's meant to be an example. So I don't, you know, I want to make sure we stick to the zoning in terms of what can go there, which the auto repairs, the real change here is, that's the one piece. The other two now are more of a limitation, so I really don't, you know, see focusing on those because you could do them as right now. I can't imagine why you would come and ask us to change the, or recommend the changing of the zoning to make you have to come to us for approval for those two uses. So what we're really talking about is the auto repair change.
Yeah. If you look at that, you know, the sense of having retail sale there or alcoholic sale, sale of alcohol beverages, it would make no sense.
Right. And I think too, and, you know, it's not so much the spot zoning issue as much as it is, we're talking about a piece of property that we're not changing it from, you know, residential to H, you know, heavy industrial one. I mean, that's not, we're talking about, you know, heavy industrial to heavy industrial one, you know, they are almost mirrors of each other. So, and considering what, you know, it's across the street from and slightly down the street from it, it would seem to fit in the area from my perspective. So those are my thoughts. And with that, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Excuse me.
Hi, Dominic, it's 296 Castle Street. I have a question. What does it mean when you say two by right? What is it by right?
Okay. So the difference between by right, if you're allowed to do something by right, you don't come see us.
Okay.
You just do it. And as long as you meet whatever the requirements are with the building department and, you know, the NG, all those guys, you never come see us. We have no control over what you do.
Okay.
Okay? So take a residential piece of property. If you build the house correctly and the piece of property is the size it's supposed to be, you don't go see anybody. You have a right to build it there.
Okay?
Because that's what belongs there. In this case, if, if the petitioner wanted to open, as Mr. Plunkett mentioned, an alcohol sales store, they could do it. It wouldn't require us to approve anything as it is now. You change the zoning to heavy industrial one, it actually would require them to come to us and present their plans and get our approval. So the difference between as right is you deal with it outside of us. If you need a special permit, you have to come see us.
Okay.
So in the heavy industrial one, those three items we discussed all require the board's approval.
Okay.
So they're no longer by right. They're only by special permit.
All right.
All right?
Thank you. I, you know, I live on that street, in New York, you don't hear the auto body shop at all for the most part, even on Hassel Street. I think that the use of his land and what he wants to do is the appropriate usage for this. And I hope that he has a certain-
All right. Very good. Appreciate it. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns on this article? Going once, twice? All right. I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board on this article? All right. So we have a motion to close the public hearing on Article 36. A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to a recommendation on Article 36, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve. We recommend adoption of Article 36.
All right. So I have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're moving on to one article, zoning article, 37 on our list, which is to see if the town will vote to amend the Tuckbury zoning bylaws, Appendix A, Section C, Paragraph 12. Am I doing the right one here? Hold on a second. These don't match. No. Oh, excuse, okay. I overchecked. Sorry. Going back up one. To see if the town will vote to change the town Tuckbury zoning map for parcels shown on accessories map 102, Lot 16, 118 Lumber Lane, and map 103, Lot 102, 120 Lumber Lane from heavy industrial to heavy industrial one.
So, and Mr. Chairman, just, there was a compelling article with this regards to changing the use, uses allowed under the HI-1 that, I don't know, logistically, if we might be able to-
That's the next one up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's one. 38.
It's going to be the same discussion because it's, you know, the same parcel, the same parcels of land. And, you know, I may be referring to some elements of that in the presentation of the first article, so however you want to deal with it.
All right. So let me ask the board. Does the board want to just take up Articles 37 and 38 at the same time?
Yes.
And discuss them at this time?
Yes.
All right. So what we'll do is we'll do Articles 37 and Article 38 at the same time. And so just so we can read out Article 38, that is, to see if the town will vote to amend the Tuckbury zoning bylaws, Appendix A, Section C, Paragraph 12A, to allow automotive sales and service in a heavy industrial district, heavy district one by special permit by the planning board. Okay. So we will take 37 and 38 together.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, for the applicant with me here tonight, is the applicant, Mr. Joe Phelan. You know, anyone that's been on the board for any period of time knows Mr. Phelan, knows him as one of the best to come before the board. I know during my term here, when you saw Joe come before the board, you knew what he said was going to be what he meant and what he said he would do, he would do. So this is a parcel of land that was shown on the map there that's located off of Lumber Lane. Just a quick second, just to align where we are here. So this is East Street, this is Carter Street, this is Lumber Lane, this is the old, you know, Mr.-
Falas.
His property. This is the old pharmaceutical place. This is where the skates-
Hockey rink.
Hockey rink is. And this is where there's a-
Teamsters trucking.
Teamsters place that they trucking, they rent some space to the hockey location. Mr. Phelan has these properties here that he's got buildings on it. And what we have here is a situation that we're dealing somewhat with the, don't want to get too deep into specifics, but it's very important to realize the purpose of the proposal by Mr. Phelan. Joe had a discussion with town manager, assistant town manager, and some others in the town about doing the change that he wanted because there's a tenant there who has needs to expand and go into the direction that we're trying to get this ability to accommodate this tenant. And the reality is, if Mr. Phelan can't accommodate him, he'll be gone after three years. If he can't accommodate him, he's there for 20 years. And it's a very, you know, it's a, it's a first-class tenant situation with a Kenworth trucking kind of, that, you know, it's the opportunity, again, the town, I know over the years, we've always been, you know, looking at economic development, that we have to do things to expand the tax base. And it's very important to, I live in town, I have lived here basically all my life, I want to stay here, I raised my kids, I grew up here, but we've got to make sure that our taxes don't chase people up. The only way we're going to do that is to be mean it when we say that we're looking to expand the economic, you know, base within our town. So we have a situation here where Mr. Phelan's property is basically somewhat isolated over into that area that you have, you know, the myriad of operations on the heavy industrial property next, you know, to the side, that you've got the Teamsters yard to the side. And Joe has his property with his buildings on it. So what we're looking to do is to change the HI to the HI-1, again, for the purpose of need or of flexibility to expand potential use. In this case here, would be a very important opportunity for Mr. Phelan because of the fact that the tenant here is looking to expand in terms of going into sale for the trucks that they utilize, which is the Kenworth trucks. And there would be limitations, though. The site is limited, it would be fairly, it wouldn't be a major traffic situation. And these are all elements that you would look at in your review during any type of special permit. But the proposal here is that if we're allowed this change, that we have a immediate potential use of the property. And then it would be a submittal, there are already plans prepared, they're already, you know, ready to go, come before the planning, before the planning board. And this was something that the expectation was that during the master zoning changeover, there was an indication that the proposed master zoning to come before the town, you know, would have incorporated this type of change for this location because of the real potential to do something that's going to be good for the town, good for the tenant, good for Mr. Phelan, generate money and allow the use that would be in keeping with what we're expecting, what we want, what we, and you control it. You control it through this special permit operation. So, you know, again, it'd be a first-class operation and anyone that's dealt with Joe in the past, don't expect anything less than that. He's not looking to sell the property. He's looking to further develop the property. He's handcuffed now because of the limitations. So opportunity is on the, you know, at his, potential opportunity is there, but he can't deal with it because of the limitations right now with the zoning under the HI district that it's there. So he needs, people need flexibility to be competitive. The tenant can't wait. So we now have a situation where they're talking possibly in October for the master zone changeover, but it's, the opportunity is gone at that time for Mr. Phelan. So it's a situation where, you know, we would say that, you know, it's, it's, if you want more detail, we could get into more detail. I know that's the tough line to, you know, to walk in terms of what you're looking for. So we have some more detail here. But just relative specifically, specifically to the zoning, that it makes sense to change this to an HI-1 because of the opportunity that it gives the owner of the property. The Article 38 to allow the automotive sales and services in the HI-1 district by special permit, again, you know, flexibility, opportunity, ability for a property owner to have opportunity presented and then come to the board and say, "Hey, I've got this possibility to have a top-rate, you know, new business or expansion, major expansion of a business in town, which is going to generate jobs, generate tax, but I can't come to you now because the limitations of what I'm zoning at this point in time do not allow me to do so." So I think it's smart in terms of allowing our business owners the opportunity to deal with opportunity, come to the board to present it, and then final determination through the special permit process is then seen to the board to trust what specific issues might arise from the particular proposal that's going to be presented.
All right. All right. I'll bring it to the board. This time, we will start with Mr. Ryder.
I don't see any issues with that.
All right. Excellent. Mr. Delaney?
I don't see any issues with that.
Mr. Fratelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Knowing Mr. Phelan's reputation in town and what he does, he does right. The last thing I would like to see is us not, as a planning board member and a resident, not allow him to keep the same type of business there, expand it to what the tenant needs, continue the business in town, and continue the taxes that are coming into that town and the jobs and anything else. So I see no problem changing it. It's miniscule, in my point, in my opinion. And again, it has to come in front of us. Again, whatever has to be done is through the planning board special permit. So with that being said, I have no problem with you.
Mr. Falas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did everything that Mr. Fratelli has said. I'll go a little further. I'll give you a little quick history lesson here. Planning board has wanted to do what a lot of people want to do, except for people that own them, is take automotive use off Route 38. And that's what we have done. In fact, we came down to three big areas. We did rezone, but we said this is where we could go. But now with this HI, that allows Mr. Phelan to legally do what we suggested that we do, put these automotive uses, in one case, there's four or five different automotive uses on this one parcel, but the parcel is 15 acres. You don't even know where it is. You wouldn't even see it. All you see is a sign down on East Street, not for Mr. Phelan, but for the one adjacent to him. But that's what we wanted to do and I applaud Mr. Plunkett and Mr. Phelan for putting this together. And I'm in favor of that and I'm all set.
All right. Okay. So brings it to me. So I guess, to build on just some of what was said, again, I think, like we just did with the other parcel, again, we're going H to H1. The change is very limited, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of what changes. And really, most of the change is that it becomes things that you have to bring to the board, which I think is ideal in most circumstances because it gives us some control to, to make sure whatever project comes in, you know, dots all the i's and crosses all the t's. The by rights, nothing we can do about it. So from that perspective, you know, it's my preference anyways. To Mr. Plunkett's point, you know, we didn't, we created the H1 district, I think we're ballparking it about four, five years ago, maybe. The zoning bylaw at this point is from 2001. So I mean, it's long since outdated at this point. So that's why we find ourselves with these, you know, where we need to make these sort of decisions on these things, because we haven't been able to, you know, to finish that up yet, but we're working on it. So, you know, for those reasons, I have no problem. I think, you know, again, we're talking about two pieces of property here, so we eliminate the discussion from the last hearing. It's isolated from, you know, from really affecting anyone, especially since, again, we're going H to H1, you know, we're not changing, you know, multi-family or residential to heavy industrial one. So from those, you know, perspectives, you know, while I think it's great that the proponent is someone that everybody's used to dealing with, beside that point, to me, if it was, you know, Joe Smith, I still think this makes sense. So I think it's great that we have somebody that everybody, you know, has familiarity with, but, you know, I'd make my decision regardless of that because I think it makes sense for that, those pieces of property in that area, as well as the addition in the zoning article, I mean, the zoning chart. So with that, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on these two articles? Again, 37 and 38. Going once, twice? All right. Bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
So we're going to close the hearing on Articles 37 and 38. A motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to Article 37, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to support.
Recommend for adoption?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion to recommend adoption of Article 37. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to Article 38?
Ditto.
Same. So we have a motion for adoption and we have a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. So that takes care of 37 and 38. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our agenda, I'm sorry, Article- Moving on to our agenda, I'm sorry, Article 39.
Let's help.
All right.
We got a follow-up.
Right, I'm sorry. So this was the one for Vail Street. So that's the one we discussed at the beginning that was requesting to be withdrawn. So the board, we're not going to conduct any hearing on it other than to say the board recommends, or if the board recommends, accepting the request to withdraw without prejudice. And in the alternative, if for some reason the petitioner were to try and push this forward, the board recommends indefinite postponement.
Correct.
All right, so we have that motion?
Yes.
All right, so we have that motion. I just say we get that, you're right. All right, so that motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So that takes care of the Vail Street one. In case anyone stuck around just to see if we were telling the truth. All right, yeah, all right. So now we'll move on to Article 40 to see if the town will vote to change the Tuxbury zoning map for the parcels showing an assessors map 72 Lot 38, which is 1600 Main Street, from multifamily district MFD to commercial district COM. Do we have anybody? Are we doing? So tell me if you just state your names to the record, the floor will be yours.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, David Plunkett represents the applicant Mark Roach and Jose Roach. Jose is at the table with me and Mark is sitting in the audience, father and son, business owners in the town of Tuxbury for 25 years. Mr. Chairman, if I could just go to the board just to, along with we are here. So this is the parcel right here, that the 1600th Main Street. This is next door, immediately adjacent is where the American gutter operation is. That is Jose's business that again has been in operation there for over 25 years. We had something recently before the ZBA that we got approval on some things that one of the deciding factors or an important factor was that we submitted letters of support from the business community. And we had letter after letter after letter of people in the Tuxbury business community that talked about what a great, you know, member of that group Jose and Mark are. If there's anything that needs to be done, if there's anyone that you're looking for help and support, they're there. So it's a situation, this parcel, they bought a few years back for the purpose of trying to alleviate a parking issue. They found out after the fact, and we're dealing with the town who will be coming before the board with an issue for a cycling special permit for the two parcels together, but one issue that came up was this used to be the entryway into the back MFD district where we now have the development that's accessed off of the...
Victor?
Here's the drive, thank you. I was having a brain freeze there. So they acquired this, it's on the Route 38 strip, but it's zoned MFD. It makes no sense that it is MFD because it's, you know, not for commercial purposes. You know, obviously you want the entire, you know, there are areas that you might have residential use, but you've got the zone for the commercials typically that were 295 feet with 150 feet frontage off of the corridor on both sides and all one here. So here's Mahoney's, here's the big industrial development here, here's the Heatherwood, you know, here's the car wash, you know, Villa Roma, you know, all the commercial uses are all there. So you have a situation where you've got, you know, business owners, great reputation, been in town for a number of years, looking to stay in town. And we just need to address this concern or this issue that it doesn't match. The MFD, you know, zoning doesn't match with the commercial use that's intended or the commercial use along that Route 38 corridor. So that's basically, you know, again, that it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to retain the MFD classification for 10,000 square foot parcel with no MFD use. I don't think you can get an MFD use on 10,000 square feet.
I think we've had people try.
So that's basically the proposal.
All right, very good. All right, we'll start with Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, thank you for the explanation. I, you know, I appreciate that and I had no problem with the idea of, again, keeping a business in town, expanding the use, what he wants to use there as far as getting into the place and out of the place. And I see no problem with that change. So I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, it's a good company. I use them at my house.
Which is not influencing Mr. Delaney's decision. He's just noting it is of interest.
They do a good job. I want them to stay.
Thank you.
So I am in support of it.
Mr. Ryder?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
I'm supported this and I don't use it.
All right. So again, for me, again, same thing as before though. I'm glad that there's somebody that, you know, that it's a business that people support and think is good. Regardless, what's being asked here makes sense, again, even if there was no business next door. It's on an island at this point, sort of that piece of property. It doesn't fit with what it's left zoned as, I'm sure, although I can't be guaranteed that it would probably have been addressed in the zoning as it's being done, it would probably find itself changed going forward anyways. So I have no problem with it. I think it fits. Again, people have asked us to try and find ways to have commercial versus residential, you know, when we can. This is a request to do so. I can't imagine why anybody would want to not support moving it from a possible housing use to a commercial use. And, you know, again, without being specific as to what may end up there, far less of an impact most likely on 38 than something else that could go in there, you know, as it stands now, if it was added to other property, who knows? But I think this makes sense regardless. It's sort of that little section at this point, you're talking about your business, this piece of property, the car wash. Now you've got the low...
Health center.
Health center. It seems to make more sense and then mixed with was across the street. I can't see a, an argument against doing it. So I support it as well. With that, open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this article? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I can motion, Mr. Chairman, close the public hearing.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the board's recommendation on Article 40?
I can recommend the adoption of the Article 41.
All right, so a motion to recommend adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
That was 40, not 41.
Is that what I said?
No, that's what Vinnie said.
I said 41.
Oh, I didn't even hear him say 41. I was saying 40, so 40, just for clarification.
Forty.
Forty, yes. We are now moving on to Article 41. All right, I'm going to take a couple of deep breaths to read this one.
Two minutes?
Yeah, you know, we'll take a two-minute recess, the request of the board. So everybody, if you need to stretch your legs or anything.
All right, bring our meeting back to order. Our next article is zoning article forty-one, which states as follows. To see if the town will vote to amend the Tewksbury zoning bylaws as follows. amend the zoning by law appendix A, section A, paragraph three, multifamily dwelling, and four, multifamily dwelling fifty-five to be allowed in the office research district by special permit by the planning board by changing the no designation in the OR column to planning board. amend the zoning by law appendix A, section B, by adding paragraph thirteen, nursing home, fourteen, assisted living facility, fifteen, community development use, and sixteen elderly congregate living facility and allow said uses in the office research district by special permit of the planning board by placing an end in all columns other than the OR column. OR columns will have the planning board designation. amend the zoning by law appendix A, section C, paragraph twenty-two, adult daycare, and twenty-five, membership club civic, social, professional, or fraternal organization to be allowed in the office research district by special permit by the planning board by changing the no designation in the OR column to planning board. That's it. All right, so with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for correcting that. David Plunkett, this is actually my decision, so I represent myself. If I might, and I apologize, I don't have any color printer in kind of office, but bottom line is, I just want to specify what we're looking at as the OR district. So we've got Andover Street, North Street. You've got on both sides of North Street where you have the the old Wang property, you have the Raytheon property to the, I guess that would be the southerly side. On the northerly side, you have on both sides of four ninety-five going down through Ames Pond, and then on Andover Street, you also have a portion on both sides of Andover Street that I believe takes in the Highland Lane or Highland Drive property that you have some use there. So the purpose of the proposal is looking at how this got here in the first place with the OR district, realizing that the planning board during the zoning by law subcommittee proposed this to change. This land was all heavy industrial land, and the concern was the potential for conflict between heavy industrial uses and, you know, joint residential uses that weren't compatible with that proximity to the heavy industrial zone. So it was in two thousand and six that this was what drove, that we changed the HI district and now those areas to OR. You know, the process, as you know, making changes to zoning bylaws and things of that, so working on the zoning by law subcommittee, you work in the back. You have intent, you have the best of intentions, and then only time tells whether you are successful in what you're intending to do. But one of the problems that have resulted is that, as you know, there are parcels there of that, just the vacant. Because the reality is, in the thirteen years since this approval in two thousand and six, the market for, you know, office parks is diminished greatly. And again, we're dealing with a situation where we're looking to have a town in which we increase our commercial base, which obviously has a direct effect on citizens who want to stay here because they don't send their kids to school. They don't, for every dollar they produce, you know, it's small caution goes providing the essentials. It helps the residents pay for the essential services that we enjoy as residents of this town. So we have a situation where, look at what's happened over the years, over on Highland Drive, how many years ago was that, that the Cormier property was permanent? It's been no activity at all. I know that they came in a few times to get extensions. I don't know if they've even given up on getting the extensions at this point in time. You have, earlier today, there was, you know, one of the owners that is, okay, we finally got it a hundred percent, you know, but they've been having problems. They're having difficulty. You have vacant land that can't, there's no big office park looking for campus type of development. Look at the Wang site. How many years ago was that, that we, that the board approved the campus-style subdivision of that property? It hasn't come through, and there's a reason. I was talking to somebody that I actually graduated from school and does a lot of municipal tax issues, and he was dealing with somebody, a big, you know, entity that had a operation in North Andover for campus-type setting, and then moving into North Endy. So, you know, why, you know, you have a beautiful campus location in North Andover, why are you coming here? And it was, well, because to attract the candidates that they want, they have, they have no choice. So that's where they're going, because that's what the market forces, that the people that want to work in these, you know, certain of the places that are typical for office parks, want to work in Boston, live in Boston, and that's what we're losing out to. So again, you have the same situation that you're dealing with, your best intentions, the hope that it would result in something that would have all these office parks to utilize that land, but it isn't. So what we're proposing is a situation that we have uses that should be deemed compatible in the sense that it's heavy industrial use. So we're holding true to the intent of the initial two thousand and six changeover that trying to get away from uses allowed under the heavy industrial zone that would be deemed incompatible with the, you know, adjacent residential use. All the uses proposed, all the classifications, we didn't create anything new, we didn't create anything different. Everything that's listed here is already a use that's identified and defined under the zoning bylaws. So there's no new classification of use or business opportunity that hasn't already been identified and enlisted in our zoning by law. And ultimately, again, it comes to the fact that nothing is being done as committed use of right in the OR district as with this proposed change. Any change that's listed here is going to be only through planning board's special permit. But what it does, it recognizes the fact that, you know, again, despite best intentions, you know, it hasn't worked out as we hoped. It's been thirteen years, and that's a pretty good time of testing whether the intent was effective, and we say, no, it's not effective. So to give the landowner, give the property owner, you know, flexibility to field potential, you know, development of the property that did not find or restricted to uses that, you know, the market forces just, you know, didn't work out, then it's not there. You know, as much as we would hope that, you know, Amazon would love to come in and build a campus, you know, style site there, it's not going to happen. So we give an opportunity to the landowner to deal with potential opportunity and then come before the board to propose it. You know, again, this is a situation where there had been discussion with the master plan, and it's just the realization that, you know, now it's possibly in October, you know, that's not certain. So it's just a matter of trying to address a situation that exists right now and allow people not to hold off, let's see what happens. It's, you know, if there's an opportunity here, again, you're the ultimate arbiter of what makes sense and what conditions are necessary to, you know, allow an approval of a specific use proposed, and that's basically it.
All right, that brings the board, start with Mr. Fowler.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think I started with you yet, so it was your turn.
David, I want to, I appreciate what you've done here. You've shined quite a light on this that maybe we've noticed, but what you're saying is true. We had the right thought, but I think we were behind the time, you know. The religion was ahead of us, so that's where they went.
And they closed the parks in.
Oh, absolutely. They closed you out of Boston, the city it is to build something. But I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, seeing some of the properties in town, Mr. Plunkett, that are still vacant, and I recall a visit to some properties on Woburn Street. I believe it was yourself, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Johnson, myself, and maybe Mrs. Reed. Those vacant, those properties are still vacant down on Woburn Street, next to the Riverview complex down there, you know? Again, offices, gigantic office spaces, that I don't know how the person who owns it is staying afloat because there's thousands and thousands of square feet down there that are still just vacant, unoccupied, and unused by Tewksbury Lowell and Barricka. So, you know, and I see the allowable potential here as far as elderly, assisted living facilities and so forth, so I'm all set with that, so, and no problem. So all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney.
I'm good.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. I'm actually against this, and reason being is, some of the big issues down there, this will become multifamily dwelling zones, or multifamily fifty-five. I mean, the town's already burdened with school right now. We're having an issue currently with potentially new school coming in. It's going to cost taxpayers roughly four hundred and fifty dollars a year on the tax bill. We put more apartments out there, more students in schools, more teachers, police and fire impact alone, you mean, we have Ames Pond down there. It is a nightmare with drugs. I live on North Street, I'm impacted by this daily. When I moved there, two thousand, my kids could walk over the street to get the mail. Now I won't even allow them to get the mail anymore. North Street, I call it Route thirty-eight. The last thing this town needs is another group of apartments, whether it's fifty-five, thirty-five, or twenty-five. We do not need another group of apartments, and I would rather that sit there for another thirteen years than put another fifty or sixty apartments down there. And I just think you are continuing to impact this town in a negative manner. At what point, and, you know, you hear every person in this town that I talk to, the last thing we need is another apartment, another condo, another apartment, more kids impacting the schools. I mean, most of we don't have sidewalks. It's horrible. One thirty-three is a nightmare. I mean, at what point is enough is enough? I mean, I think we've got to get some, get out there with marketing, you know, work with, I mean, I understand the business owner, they can do what they want to do, the building owner, they can do what they want to do, but if the building owner really wants to do something, work with the community development market, work together. There's always another alternative. There has to be another alternative. I just don't know what else can impact the town, and it's the last thing we need is, our roads are horrible, traffic's horrible. I just, I can't support this. I think it's a bad move. I mean, I think the last election, people talked about this, it's going to be another hot topic this election. The school is another really big hot topic right now, and the last thing we need to do is turn around in two, three years from now, have to build another school or two more schools if we put in another hundred, two hundred apartments down there, potential two to three kids in each one of those. What is enough is enough? What's enough? I don't know. It's just my opinion, but I feel there's a lot of people out there feel the same thing, so I guess this, you know, it's going to be a town meeting to decide, but I can't support this.
All right, so at least it was me, right? So this is one of those times when Mr. Ryder and I will be the yin and the yang of what's going on here.
That's fair.
No, I respect Mr. Ryder's opinion, and that's, you know, his comments are valid, but I hope that the ones I'll make now on the other side will just be as valid for consideration anyways. And Mr. Fowler outranks me by, by some time. I'm the next, I'm the next longest-serving member on this board, and in the entire time I've been here, not once, that I believe, have we had an office research project brought before this board. Not once. It doesn't make sense. Two thousand and eight put an end to where office research was coming here on an undeveloped piece of property. We have developed pieces of property that don't get used and haven't been in almost the entire time I've been here. So to force a piece of property to sit there with a designation that is so outdated, again, the zoning book is being done because it's from two thousand and one, well before the economic crash that basically said one twenty-eight's open for business again because a whole bunch of businesses fell out of there, and people want to go there a lot more than they're going to come here to build something. The OR makes no sense. What, and, you know, whether people agree with it or not, I'll say this, if these changes go through, you still must bring the project before this board. This board is not under any obligation to approve the project. If we think it is too big, if we think it doesn't fit, if it doesn't work, we can simply say no. That is the prerogative of the board. We're not required to say yes, and if you don't meet what we're asking for, we won't. It's that simple. So I just, I hate the idea of making property unusable. I'm not saying you can do it, I'm saying you have the option to bring it forward for a use that could be used. You know, every time the property comes up for a comment, it's either we don't want this, we don't want that. At some point, there has to be a yes thing that can go there. Office research, it's never going to happen. I can't imagine that this piece of property is not going to be addressed during the zoning change, even if this isn't done, because there's no way it's staying office research as its designation. It just doesn't make sense. It's an outdated use for an area that it's never going to be used that way. You know, we didn't want a casino, that's fine. We've had projects come forward that were strictly, you know, and again, they weren't actually brought before us, they were a suggestion of what might go there that were, you know, for multifamily developments. That's fine, but they aren't the end of it. That has to come before us as a petition for a special permit. But not designating this property as something that could actually be used. I know Mr. Ryder said he'd be fine if it stayed empty for thirteen more years. I understand that if a project isn't brought before us that makes sense, that maybe that would be what happens, but to leave it in a state where that's an absolute, to me, seems foolish to the town. To have a piece of property that just simply has no use and to have it just sit there, I mean, I know some people like just being able to look at it in its current state, and that's fine with people. Well, if that's the case, then the town needs to buy it from whoever owns it and preserve it then, but that's a price tag I'm not sure people are going to be very happy with. Otherwise, having some use that can be used makes sense to me. And again, it's not a by right, just because you can do it doesn't mean you're going to be able to do it. I just, I think to leave the property in a state that is just simply unusable makes no sense. So that's my yin to Mr. Ryder's yang. With that, I'll open it up to the public with any questions, comments, or concerns on this article.
Hi, I'm Jane Miller, eight twenty Shocking Street. And both of you make very interesting points, Mr. Ryder and Mr. Johnson, about not being able to develop property in, you know, the twenty-first century, and also not bringing multifamily use to this area. I just want to remind the board that there are a number of non-binding ballot questions that may open up a use at some point to the town for marijuana research and testing and so forth. That might be an ideal use for this kind of area. And there are businesses over there, Wealthhead is a very excellent addition to our community, and they are hiring and expanding in that area on Ames Pond, so I'm not sure that it is a dead-yet zoning, and I think it might be a good idea to put it off at least till the fall, until we have a better idea of what may happen with the marijuana question that comes before the committee for three questions. Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions, comments?
Mark Rappam, East Sunset Road. I see both sides. I know this vacant, this hostel's been pretty empty for a while, but to Mr. Ryder's point, the last thing we do need is another large residential area up there. You know, the infrastructure is not suited for it, there's not, I don't see anything coming in the future to do any infrastructure improvements up there. We are looking at a zoning by law change that will probably come forward in fall, and the residents, once again, will have a chance to vote on that. I think we should listen to what the recommendations of what the zoning by law committee comes together. Maybe they have some couple ideas of what can go in there, and they've been studying it for a year of what can go in there. So maybe this isn't zoned correctly, as everyone's speaking, obviously, without getting any takers, that's the way it is, but let's take a look at what maybe the community can come up with and have ideas of what maybe could go in there. And that's what, they've been studying it over here, we put a committee together, let's hear what they have to say. So I would be in favor of not voting in this end until we at least get to our fall. Let them come up with the recommendations, because we've been talking about, I hear all the time, that it's like, you know, we are not bound to issue the permit if we don't take a try. But then I also hear a lot of times I hear people saying, well, that's what it's zoned for. So we zoned it for it, and, you know, it's going to be coming in then, it's like, well, we did change the zoning to, and now they're coming, so some developer came in because we put that zoning there. Well, let's put ourselves in a position where we did zone it, and now we're regretting what we zoned it for, we have to look at all options, so, thank you.
Anyone else with questions, comments, or concerns?
Hi, Karen Saliva, two fifty-four North Street. I agree with what the previous two speakers have said, and also with Mr. Ryder's assessment. I don't think not being able to get somebody in there should be the residents' problem. It seems like we're lacking on the reaching out for economic development as opposed to having to rezone something and opening up a big old can of worms that will come back to bite us, I'm sure. The last thing we need is more development in this town and to open that up to multifamily and, or even the other aspects of it, like the nursing home type thing. The high volume of traffic that a big entity like that would cause, it'd be a nightmare on an already very busy street. I, like Mr. Ryder, also live on North Street. Constant police cars by at all times of the night down in that direction. I don't think we need to add any more to it, whether it be from the school perspective or any other perspective. I'd rather have it sit there and, you know, not have to deal with what this could open up as a can of worms. Thank you.
All right, anyone else with any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Good evening. Brian Lelos, L E L O S, one seventy-five McCarthy Way. I live on the other side of the earth, six miles away, Seltum Berry. I never got to speak to Mr. Ryder or ever heard any of his comments before, but I was very impressed by anybody coming here. I will be honest with you, I'm very, very impressed on his comments, so I guess I'm a fan of his now.
Autographs, autographs are after the meeting, though.
Well, I'm sure I can last that long, I need to go somewhere, but, yeah, I'm here for another subject, but I need no attention to coming up here. It's not Tewksbury, I understand it's not Tewksbury. I own a livery business in town, I'm a homeowner, business owner, my wife is a employee in town, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so I want to congratulate you on basically speaking up, that is very, 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 very good. Ms. Middel, speaking up. Obviously, our friend, Mark, thank you, Mark. I like him down because there was something put out there, and I saw it tonight, and this meeting was going on. So I ran down here from my office at twenty-five hundred Main Street, which is on the Wilmington Line. And again, this is a not Tewksbury situation, I understand, but I'm still the town president, so I just want to say that I agree with everything Mr. Ryder said. I don't know Mr. Ryder from a hole in the law. Again, I'm here for another subject altogether, but he spoke the truth tonight, and I'm sick and tired. Thirty-eight is just whackout. One thirty-three, I have drivers that want to quit, that, you know, when they, because we have so many people that we pick up in Tewksbury, drop off, pick up, corporate, private executives, et cetera, et cetera, that are just sick and tired. The traffic is just phenomenal. It's really ridiculous. So that's it. Again, I want to thank you all for listening, and again, I know it's not Tewksbury, but it's Tewksbury. Again, I'm so sick of hearing not Tewksbury, it's all Tewksbury, whatever. You know, I'm in Seltum Berry, I fought for the fight a hundred years ago and all the other stuff, too, and I just want to really, really thank Mark, Jane, and everyone, because they're really, really speaking up. Again, I was not here for the subjects, okay, but I've been standing there and listening to it, and like, wow. Thank you, I appreciate you listening.
No problem. Anyone else with any other questions, comments, or concerns? Going once? Nope, sir, go ahead. Oop, careful now. No injuries, we want no injuries.
I've been here for almost thirty-five.
Sir, if you'd just give your name and your address, please, sorry.
I'm McMahon, Polaris Lane.
Thank you.
I've been here for almost thirty-five years, and I've seen the growth in the town, which is good for the town in some ways, but it's gone too far. I mean, I lived. I mean, I lived right off of Shawshank Street. I remember years ago, if you didn't have a stop sign, you could just drive right, drive right out. You can't do that anymore. And forget Saturday morning, because you got a line from, uh, from one end of, uh, Tewksbury to the other. And it's just, it seems like every inch is being developed. And, yeah, towns need that, but you also need some space. You need to be able to, you know, if somebody has young kids, you had to be able to let them play on the front yard. I mean, I don't face Shawshank Street, I'm in a little bit. But it's like anywhere else, it's like a lot of people moved up here to get out of the inner city. Now, we're just, we're ending up having the inner city here, and we just want some space, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah.
All right.
I don't think I need the microphone door.
We'll use it anyways. We'll take the chance.
Okay, how's that?
Very good.
Um, I move Body Spiegel, 119 Vernon Street.
Thank you.
I moved to Tewksbury in 1974. I came from New York City, and I want to tell you that Tewksbury is getting to be like New York City. I moved to this town because it was like country, I mean, it was like, you had space. The last couple of years, all you hear about is these big buildings going up, and I feel like I'm back in New York. The traffic on 38, I have to agree with everybody, is horrible. I go to Alliance Club meeting, I live at the last street in Tewksbury. It can take me a half hour to get up to TJ Callahan's, which shouldn't happen. You stay at that light on Shawshank Street for a good 20 minutes. Then after that, you can, you can sometimes go. I agree with Mr. Ryder, we have too many projects going in here. Our streets are horrible, uh, you've got swimming pool, uh, swimming pools for cockholes. Uh, things aren't getting done that we need, but yet they want to develop more. I think more money should be put into infrastructure and things that we really need as residents as opposed to building five-story buildings. We need to have some space like the last speaker said. Thank you.
Anyone else with any other questions, comments, or concerns? We can only go once. We're going to keep it to once, otherwise we'll never get out of here tonight, so. Anyone else? Going once, twice? Sold. All right, we'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board? Any other comments or anything from the board?
Just that we've heard all of this before. We know all of this, but I'll say it again. Route 38 needs a center turning lane. We try to, we try to, um, modify that by doing decelerated lanes and acceleration lanes, and now the state won't let us do that, which I don't blame them for that. But you can't get anywhere, because if someone wants to take a turn, they have to stop in the lane they're driving in to get over to the other side. We need a center turning lane. The record's had a center turning lane for 30 years or more. Um, I feel like we're second class, because we've had two road projects in Tewksbury. You did a marvelous job with sidewalks, curbs, et cetera, but they're still the same width they were, they are when they started. What I'm talking about is something like, not like the four lanes down in front of Walhalla, but just a center turning lane. And if we have to do some takings, so be it, you have to. This is the 20th, 21st century. I hate myself. 21st century, and we're still driving down the same path that our forefathers put roads on when they were in wagons. Got to do that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll shut.
All right. Again, not to belabor the point, again, I appreciate all the comments, you know, the concerns about growth, you know, um, I think, you know, what it ultimately comes down to is, you know, no growth is not good. You know, that's bad for a town. Smart growth is what we want. And then it comes down to, you know, where people feel what is and what isn't smart. You know, um, this board is, you know, the one who has to make that decision a lot of times, because that's just the way it is for those type of projects. Again, I just, I, you know, when I see that something, I guess in this case, you know, property that, you know, has sat like this for this long with no prospects for being used for anything, you know, I'm not saying what should go there, I'm simply saying that I think it makes sense to open up the possibilities so it can be heard. Again, it's not a by right, it's something that has to come to this board. You know, I just, I try to deal in reality of what's, you know, what goes on, and, you know, try to look ahead and not always what's just right in front of us. I worry about properties like this when we say no, 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 and we have a position where something goes in there that we aren't allowed to comment on anymore and have no control over, because it's going to be jammed down the town's throat. You know, people went bonkers on that piece of property at the corner of Astle, when this board had no control over what was going on there, when they were putting forth the lip proposal. You know, and people didn't understand why we no longer had control of that. If you can't stop it and you say no, no, no to other things, eventually you may get to a point where you get something that you hate so much, because it looks terrible, it's too big, and we, in this case, we have no control over trying to either limit it, uh, how it looks, its size, or anything. So, I try to keep that in mind. So, when, if anyone thinks that, you know, I'm just simply pro, do whatever you want, build whatever you want, it isn't that, at least from my perspective. I won't speak for anybody on the board. I'm just trying to be realistic as to what is the potential end game when we say no to some things of what can happen. And when people came crazily down to town meetings, you know, to see what was going on with that corner piece at Astle, that's an example of what I'm talking about, of what you can end up with when we lose control of being able to deal with pieces of property, especially large pieces of property. That's my only, that's one of my concerns, and why when I make these recommendations, I do take that into consideration, because, you know, you don't see it now, but you run the risk that you could get it down the road. So, that, again, that's, those are some of the things I take into account when I, when I make these recommendations. And I like the idea when the planning board has, you know, the ability to have some control over what's going on as opposed to being removed totally from the process. You know, maybe not everybody likes everything we do, but I think everybody here puts in a, uh, a concerted effort to do the best we can for the town. And it's the only way I can look at any of these, so. And again, I won't speak for anybody else, but that's, that's how I try to look at it. So, again, what is the pleasure of the board on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before someone stands and closes the hearing, I don't think this is a hearing to be closed. Uh, it was alluded to that, uh, this might be better suited during or at the special town meeting in October, when the planning board's, uh, rezoning of the, no, zoning bylaw subcommittee presents everything to the town, that at that time, you might have a better picture of what's going on in these spots that we're talking about. So, I would offer this to, I would offer this to Mr. Plunkett to withdraw this without prejudice and, uh, my first thought was to, uh, not withdraw it, but to put it on the table, but I don't think we can do that.
I think the options, and again, just let me just, I think the options I think we would have available are, obviously, the petitioner could request to have it withdrawn without prejudice, vote for adoption, vote for indefinite postponement. I believe we could make no recommendation, which I would believe would leave it in sort of the same.
It would still be before.
It would still go before, what I'm saying is at that point, we're throwing it out to town meeting, neither an up or a down, it's just throwing it out to town meeting to allow a vote.
I'd like to ask Mr. Plunkett that now.
The way I look at it is that certainly, even if the, this goes forward to the town meeting and is adopted, there's nothing preventing the issue to be addressed by the master zoning article anyway, because it's going to, regardless of whether we're dealing with zoning amendments through 2018 town meeting or 2019 town meeting. So, so the town still has the ability, and we still have the ability certainly to address before that committee, but, you know, if in fact, you know, it doesn't get voted on, it doesn't go forward, then we're back now another year, rather than saying 13 years, we're saying 14 years.
I will say.
I don't see where, you know.
I will say one thing, because this is where I have to do, you know, if I do my good cop, I have to do my bad cop, to be fair. There is one major difference. If this is passed at town meeting and then the zoning article is passed after the fact, it's grandfathered.
Yes.
So, that is, that is a difference. And I want to be fair, because if I say things that sound too positive and I ignore the alternative, you know, I don't want anyone to think that I'm playing aside, but if this is passed at town meeting and a different zoning is placed on it at, in, with the zoning article, it's grandfathered, so.
Grandfathered, again, to the extent that it's a special permit planning board issue.
Right, the planning board would have the right to deny any project, sure.
And certainly, if, if in fact, you know, in terms of looking towards the potential of any court on appeal saying that you didn't have the right to deny it based within your discretionary rights, and one of your, uh, reference points in the denial of your discretionary rights is that you then put forward this master zoning plan that wasn't compatible with that master zoning plan, I can't see any, any way of prevailing on that. If it were permitted uses of right, then yes, I agree that, then you'd say, okay, you can't stop it then, once I get in there. But we're talking discretionary and this, I can't see any way you're called, and then your court's going to uphold.
Fair enough, but like I said, just for, just for, you know, so every base is covered and, you know, we heard it all. So, um, again, I think if I'm understanding Mr. Plunkett, I think he'd still like us to let this go forward. So, at that point, we, well, I guess first we're going to close it. So, um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So, I just need a clarification, because I want to have the vote read right on this at least. Is everybody in favor of at least closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so then that, that's a five. I just wanted, I wanted to be clear. All right, now, with that, we can take motion for adoption, indefinite postponement, or to recommend, or make no recommendation, I think are our three options. Are there any motions to any of those three?
I'd make a motion, uh, make no recommendation.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion made and seconded. Um, I'll ask, is there any other motions?
Well, I'd make a motion that the board adopted, tell you the truth. Mr. Chairman?
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, a motion seconded. So, we have two, two on the, two on the table, so.
Which one prevails?
Well, I guess that'll go by the vote, right? I would take them in order, I guess, so, uh, we have a motion for no recommendation. So, all those in favor of no recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
As does the chair. So, to the motion on adoption, uh, all those.
What did the chair vote?
I voted no. So, all those in favor for adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As does the chair. All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, so three to two is the recommendation for adoption on the article. And the chair will make that clear when we get to town meeting, so that we're being upfront. It won't just simply say adoption, I will make sure that everybody understands it was three to two. All right? All right, with that, I believe we have concluded our zoning, yeah, absolutely.
One more suggestion, I think, um, obviously, this is still going to the planning board. I think we're doing the residents a disservice by bringing black and white. If you plan on bringing maps, colored maps must be done, because, I mean, anyone that does not understand a zoning map, you're just seeing shades of gray.
You don't have to do a big one like that.
No, 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 I think color ones, I think, I think it could come across as trying to cover something up by doing in black and white, just in opinion, you don't want someone to say, because somebody that doesn't understand a zoning map really can't see shades, so.
Uh, just to feed off the same thing, because again, this is the same thing, we do get in a little bit of trouble with this stuff. What's being requested here is a change to the appendices, that's really what's happening. It's not, we're not identifying property, but if you're going to do it and you're going to notify anybody of your piece, that's fine.
Clarification of the map or correlates with the appendix.
If there's going to be one there, that's all I'm saying, is that, but as it stands out what was submitted, it doesn't actually have a map that was informational tonight.
I try to.
If it gets added, Mr. Ryder's comment that we're very clear about color is ideal. So, all right, so with that, um, we'll move on to agenda item E, which is 1420 And, what's that? No, we still got to do them all. So, 1420 Andover Street, continued special permit, definitive subdivision. Uh, the petitioner has requested that this be continued. Is this the one they wanted to actually go till?
For the record, Mr. Chairman, David Plunkett representing the applicant for items E and F. I heard from the landplex, the engineer today, and, you know, they're going, they've got something going, they're going to have hearing before the coin con, and they're finalizing some other plans, so the request is to have it made 13 to make certain that, you know, when we come back, conservation is done, all the changes, uh, everything into one final statement.
David, you said May 13th?
May 13th, maybe, yes.
So, we don't have a planning board meeting that is May 20th.
20th.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, so, uh, that's the first one after the.
Town meeting, yes, that's correct.
All right, so then it'll be the 20th.
All right, so then we have a motion to continue this to the planning board's next meeting on May 20th at.
Um, I think it will be, I think that's the next one, so. So, we don't, we don't have anything scheduled yet.
Okay, so we're going to say seven.
Probably seven o'clock.
Yeah, so we'll say seven o'clock, because we have nothing on there for right now.
Seven.
Seven, so.
This is May 20th?
Yeah, May 20th, after town meeting, uh, May 20th at 7:00 PM. So, do I have a motion?
So.
I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so we have that continued till the 20th of May.
Both.
Just.
No, just that, now we're doing the next one.
Just E.
E and F. Can we do them separately? Should we do them separately?
Yeah, we got to do F now.
He wants F.
All right.
Heads up, David.
Heads up, David.
That's not David.
All right. No, it's not, I don't think so. No. So, now we're moving on to agenda item F, which is the 1037 North Street, 1547 Andover, 1553 Andover, 1563 Andover. Um, so, yeah, this is continued as well, right?
Yeah, so that's from Andy Street.
Right, so we've got a request to continue this to our next planning board meeting, which would be April 22nd, also at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, at 7:00 or something.
No, you just said May 20th for both.
No, that's something else, it's two different hearings.
Two different people.
This is North Street, Andover.
Different, different.
Yeah, it's just E, I'm sorry.
Okay, you did say both, right?
He did say, he did say E and F, so that's all.
Yeah, that was mine.
Okay.
Despite Mr. Plunkett's efforts to continue the, the hearing F till May, I think they would prefer that we do it till 7:00 PM on April 22nd. So, do I have a motion? I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. So, we have that continued. That brings us to agenda item G, which is 2131 Main Street, special permit, site plan special permit, South Village Overlay District special permit, continued. Once you guys get yourselves settled, if you just state your names to the record, the floor will be yours.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Andy Street, Civil Design Consultants. So, we have, uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You may let her know, especially this gentleman, get to speak up.
Yeah, because we're trying to pick it up off there, basically, so.
Sure. Uh, so we've been through this project a fair amount of times, been before this board till the time, so. So, we've been through this project a fair amount of times, been before this board, so it's requested, I'm having to run through this general outline again, but when we left last time, the three, I think three items that were on the table is, there was one remaining comment in the DPW about snow storage, and we had some snow storage shown on top of new sewer manholes, and that had been changed, we changed the snow storage lines to haul it off the snow, the sewer manholes, that's been resubmitted, we have not heard back, but we're confident that there's an answer there to resolve that item, there's plenty of play in my snow storage area. We went to conservation, what was that, a week and a half ago at this point, so we've been to the Conservation Commission since the last planning board meeting, the next hearing is scheduled for Wednesday. By all accounts, there was no concerns out of that last meeting. Ms. Gallo, the agent, wrote a letter, a couple of items, it'll be as the order condition is related to double, double rows of erosion control, and I believe that's bringing trash out of the weather. So, no, no stormwater concerns, no drainage calculations concerns, really nothing, nothing major came out of that last meeting. And then, the third item was the potential for a deceleration lane or other work in the right of way to, I'm affronted with this parcel, the, since that time, the, I assume this letter's been received by the board, but the DOT did write a letter essentially stating that the construction of a separate turn lane or deceleration lane is, paraphrasing, not warranted in this particular application for this use, and this, this number of, this units and the volume of traffic that are generated by this site. I am here tonight, Ron Mueller, the traffic engineer is here tonight as well, we're happy to answer any further questions that the board can have.
All right, that'll bring it up to the board. Let's start with Mr. Pataia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to see a letter from Mr. Stedman, from the District Highway Director of Mass DOT about the decel lane. So, just for the record, you're looking to do 17 units, correct?
Sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, sixteen and one commercial, I'm sorry, right?
Sixteen, yes, I'm sorry.
Sixteen and one, okay.
Thousand square foot commercial.
Right, okay. Was there any discussion about the regulations from the postal service regarding location of the boxes on that development?
We have not had those discussions, no.
I thought that's going to become part of the new development process in town. I know Mr. Sadbrook and I discussed that regularly, recently, about that being an issue when new developments coming in, because they are looking to put in what they call CBU boxes, which are cluster boxes, so the letter carrier coming up, parking in one location, deliver the entire complex, and leave, so.
Please, yeah, it has a-
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, so that's a new process that we're, basically, we're just notifying developers that they need to be in contact with the Tewksbury Postmaster to discuss those changes, and that they are requiring that for all different types of locations, even single-family homes, so, yep, so it's something to discuss with the Tewksbury Postmaster.
Is there, if I may, is there a set of guidelines, or?
Yep, that's something I can provide to, so.
I believe they're going to need a location for the letter carrier to pull up to, with a concrete support, securing the, what they call CBU box, which gets opened by the letter carrier, delivered to one location, rather than delivering the entire complex.
Sure.
And that'll be for also, for new developments in town, they want to get away from having the letter carrier going from house to house to house, rather than go to one central location, deliver all the mail, and then leave, so. You may want to look at that in the complex somewhere, for a location for the carrier to pull up to with his truck, so, but, I think, correct?
Yep, that's correct, yeah.
So, I mean, that, just for the record, you may need to do that, so, but, other than that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Fallow.
I'm all set.
All right, Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. I will speak to, I spoke with Mass Highway, my old DOT these days now, myself, at length about this, understanding that Route 38 is horrible, to say the least, you know, and the impact, understanding that it doesn't meet the guidelines that they require one. And I still think this is, you know, going to impact that street significantly, with what we have here, coming across the street, potential other development up that end. You know, I'll be honest, I'm not happy with DOT, DOT is their road, but Tewksbury has to deal with it. Unfortunately, we didn't have the support of them, so, that's all I'd say, thank you.
Mr. Delaney.
Yeah, I guess, the question about the conservation has been answered. Mass DOT told us that it's not needed, so I guess all my questions have been answered.
All right, all right, I have nothing to add at this point, so we'll open it up to any public comment, questions, comments, or concerns?
Hi, thank you very much, board. My name is Brian E. Lelos, my son is Brian M., once in May 5th at Coffee Way, Tewksbury Mass, but I'm also the property manager and head trustee of 2500 Main Street in Tewksbury, which is on Route 38, where the old Sal's Pizza would be, that's been closed for about a year and a half, two years now. Also, by the way, that's also in Wilmington line, literally, and it's probably estimation eighth mile, quarter mile, tops. Traffic has gotten so bad, we have 24 unit owners, two rentals, but they're still owned by everyone, two of them are rented, and we've had many people there that have been there for years. We have chiropractors, we have psychologists, we have myself, that owns a livery service, we have one particular hairdresser, no more, we actually put that in our bylaws, we changed that, and went before the board, and we changed everything on that one. But we have, it's a professional place, and we've had attorneys, et cetera, et cetera, and we have accountants there, too. Actually, we have three different accountants, so it's a business park, bottom line totally. The traffic has gotten so bad in the last nine to 12 months, that it's backed up past our area now. So, if you guys are familiar, you folks are familiar with Sal's, it goes almost back to Wilmington line now, okay, almost. The signs only literally down the street, past Route 38 Cafe, maybe another eighth mile, I mean, that's pretty bad, that's sad, okay? And I have people complaining to me, as a property manager, and a business owner, and a homeowner, and, again, my wife working in town also, okay, asking me to handle it. How, how, how am I going to handle it? I can't handle the traffic, it's bad, I know. So, what are people doing? What are they doing? Okay. What they're doing is, they're going down by my house, they're going down Brown Street, over the little bridge that was shut down for two and a half years, and thanks to Mr. Solly, they got that bridge opened, between three towns, Belorica, Wilmington, and Tewksbury, and they're taking a shortcut around. So, now when you go down Brown, over the bridge, and go down Whipple, it's backed up for, you know, I'm going to give you an estimation, and not over-exaggerated, quarter mile, three eighths per mile, backed up, at traffic time, at my show. So, to get through that stop sign, now that we have four stop, we have four stop signs, I mean, you have a stop sign going this way, this way, what's that? I'm not sure what the actual streets are, what's it, where?
Shushin Street.
Shushin, Shushin and Brown, well-
Slash Whipple.
It's, it's a mess, I mean, and then they're going on the side streets now, and people got used to that, because when the bridge was shut down for quite a while, and guess what? We actually have people in this room right now that live in South Tewksbury. We have a person running for selectmen, Ms. Mello, we have Mr. Crackman that lives in South Tewksbury, and they're well aware of it, I mean, I'm not going to mention the board. It's, it's horrible, but I'm getting sick of listening to people, and it's my job to listen to them, but, in an office complex, there are people who want to move out of Tewksbury, businesses, businesses. We're talking about 24 units, may not mean much, they're condo units, they're not big businesses, they're not great beyond, I agree with that, they're not, but they bring in a lot of business in, you know. In my one complex alone, there's six doors, I'm on the end, at 2500 Main Street, I'm in Unit 212. Downstairs, we have an accountant, to the left of me, there's another company that does promotional stuff, we have a psychologist upstairs, which brings tremendous business in, and then myself, that's just one door, and we still have five more doors to go. And our parking lot's even getting busy, but they're complaining that this, the traffic to get there is horrible. Now, I know, as a, as a family man, my daughter works in town, she works for a daycare center, my wife works in town, my son, technically not Market Basket Wilmington, but that's one he chose, not the Tewksbury one, so, we all are part of this town, all right, and it's gotten so bad, it's gotten worse. I have many cars, but I don't keep them here, because I'm under restriction, which I've been for this board many years ago, when I turned Richard O'Neil, Rick O'Neil, that's actually in my office still, semi-retired, as you guys all know. It's bad, I mean, some of you, you just start looking at it, and again, Mr. Ryder, I don't know him, like, in, I mean, I'm going to court, I'll swear on the Bible, I don't even know this man from a hole in the wall to tonight, like, and I haven't even talked to him. He makes sense, he, he's the only one, and I'm not saying that you guys don't understand, but he makes sense, he talks about it, he speaks about it, it's bad, it's terrible, it, it's disgusting. I remember when the 38 fire station was shut down, I fought that damn thing, I mean, that was ridiculous, I mean, and the sun was shutting down, and the pools were all open, I mean, you know, that's a different subject altogether, but still, it's bad, it's bad, okay? And then, again, I came up here before the board, and we guys are not Tewksbury, because of traffic, I had no intention of coming here for that. I saw this on Facebook, I came here because I saw someone post something, and I made that here tonight, I had no intention of being, I'm supposed to be down in Aspen right now, down in the airport, no, really, not to a pickups, I own the company, doesn't mean I can't get pickups, but, but I'm supposed to be down there, okay, and I'm here, because I find it to be very, very, very important. Are we really going to take in more, more traffic? I mean, how much more are we going to take? I mean, Mavericks just shut down, they didn't really create much traffic, but, I mean, it was nighttime stuff, whatever, so be it, but, have any of you guys, has anyone even reviewed or looked at 38 from the fire station, South Street Fire Station, straight down? I'm scared of it, I mean, I don't know, you guys, I mean, I had to cut through Route 38 Cafe, and take the side streets, I don't even know the names of the streets anymore, I'll be honest with you, and I know one state street, I know it by heart, okay, but I don't know the names, and I've been here since 2000, March of 2001, I came here, from Medford, 12 years, grew up in Melrose, okay, I, I just, yeah, Medford, yeah, it's just whatever, but Melrose, no.
I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I got to reel you in, like, I got to bring you back to the topic at hand, if you make, you know, sum up your point, just so I get into others.
Johnson, I'm sorry. My, my, my point is, I'm going to lose owners, I'm going to lose vacancies, I'm going to lose, people are going to sell their units, okay, or, we're going to run to a major poll, I have 24 units, okay, at 2500 Main Street, okay? If you guys don't care about that, or you do care about that, and don't take that as being improper by me saying that, but we have 24 unit owners, no matter what, there's 24 unit owners, they may own two units, some may own one unit, okay, but they're business owners in town, and they complain constantly about everything changing, and nobody's doing nothing. They talk about the taxes, this, that area, but we don't get nothing for it, I'm slowing it down, I apologize, I want to get out of here, so, trust me, I really do, a long time ago. You know, but we can't handle it much longer, okay, and I'm hoping that these people that are our selectmen, and our planning board, will look at this very, very closely, it's getting sickening, this is all we hear, we've been listening to this the last five, seven, eight years, 10 years, I don't know what's been now, it's, it's, it's getting nauseous, you know, stop it, stop it, it has to stop, okay, it really has to stop. I think I said enough, but I'm going to tell you one more, just one more time, 24 business owners, and I don't think not one, besides me, they don't want me, lives in town, they're all outsiders, and all they do is complain, okay, that there are people who can't get there, they're late for their appointments, the traffic is getting bad, it's morning, it's my show, today, I'm not going to lie to you, it's open, it's open, I mean, it's 40 mile an hour zone, 45 miles an hour, I think, I mean, it's pretty open, but, it's bad, but as soon as you get to the South Street Fire Station on, forget about it. Who the hell wants to go, who, who wants to drive down there anymore? No, no, why do people go to the Wilmington Market Basket? Where my son works, because it's open, well, yeah, and so you're down, you know, by there, like, still by Rockus. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for listening.
How you doing? Mark Crimmon, Sunset Road.
Good time, bless you.
Good bless you. So, I've heard everybody's talking about this, and I've listened to everybody's comments about this, and granted, I appreciate all the board members looking at this carefully, you know, everybody's worked hard, and we can't try to come up with solutions, to put some mitigation up there. Mass DOT is not saying we need mitigation, saw the letter, okay, but Mass DOT is not looking at the stretch of 38, they're looking at this one development, that's, that's the way they determine it, how many cars go in and out of that one driveway? But in the last year, this board has permitted four developments along that section of roadway. There's four major developments that are going in, and all four of them are impacting that stretch of roadway. I also heard the board say, you know, just because it's zoned for something, doesn't mean that we have to vote it in, if it's too big, then we don't have to do it. This used to be an autopot store, the only thing that was in that location was an autopot store, they put in 16 houses in a commercial development on a place where we used to have an autopot store. That's not too big, I, I find that's way too big, and I understand that we're going to have comments and say, well, we've done this before, we may have done it before, when is it time to stop? I mean, we may have, there's fossils where we did this one section before, we let them give a variance on this, build a little bit bigger, because nothing's been built there for a while, try to get empty lots, I'm all in favor of getting rid of empty lots, but there isn't a lot of empty lots anymore, there's none there, so there's one lot left out of five lots, and they've all filled them in one year. So, everybody's making money off these things, and when they're saying that it's not economically feasible to build it smaller, then why are you building them all? And why do we need 16 houses on a lot that used to have an autopot store, and then we're going to have another commercial building that I am confident that nobody's going to want to go into? If you can't get in another place, nobody's going to want to go in. So, we'll have another storefront that's going to be on 38, because they have, I mean, they're going to make their money off the residential, they even said at a meeting, if it was up to them, they wouldn't even build a commercial spot, because they're going to make the money off the residential. So, they're going to build it, only because it meets the zoning of what we have, but it's taking advantage of what the zoning is, they're going to build a commercial lot that nobody's going to use. We have a whole, we already have a bunch of lots on 38 that nobody's filling, and it's particularly for the same reason, they're building them, but nobody's going into them. You know, DOT says, you know, you don't need this, but you do not have to approve 16 units, there's nothing in the bylaws that say how many that are allowed. And when we're talking about putting turning lanes and those things, well, it's difficult to put turning lanes and takings if we're jamming everything up and, up into the, right up to the roadway. So, I mean, you're pushing all these residential into the roadway, and then you're going to have a commercial place that's in front, and at least if they did the decel lane, there would have been a rule that if DOT decided to do some lining out there eventually, that would have, they could have taken that into consideration, but without that in consideration, there's nothing left, this is, everything's being pushed right up to the limits of the roadway, and so, DOT is going to say, you know, particularly, they're going to say, why do you keep letting them build them? Now, they're looking at each individual, we're doing roadway reconstruction projects, we're trying to do, we're doing Southern Sun, we're doing Colonial to Old Boston Road, and we're trying to do those improvements, but they're taking into consideration- But they're taking into consideration what we have now. But jamming as many units into these parcels as possible, I think is insane. I think it's just way too much. I mean, they came to you with six or eight units, okay? You know, what is the town getting from this for sixteen units? What is the benefit that's, these residents are getting by us approving this? I mean, okay, we're getting a couple of, uh, you know, affordable housing, but it's just offsetting because they're building so many of them, they offset the ones that we're building on with them, so their numbers aren't going down with them. Because it is, all they're gonna do is status quo. So, it's not helping us with our, with our numbers. I just don't see what benefit of approving this to our community is giving us. And we try to work. We tend to say, can you try to do this? Can you try to do some mitigation? It's been a pushback ever since we started it. I didn't see anything with the offer to the community. If they came to us and said, okay, you know, if we get more units, we'll give you more affordable to help us with our forwarding, but no, they go right to the wall with pot, and it's just about making money. It's not helping the town, it's helping the owner, and it's not doing anything to benefit the community. It's gonna cause traffic. Granted, according to the counts, it's not a big traffic generator, but combine that and all the other ones that you put there, with the traffic that's already there, it's not doing anything for our community. I just don't see a benefit to helping us, so, what is your name?
Anyone else? You got to be to the podium.
Last one's in the front row. No, Jane Miller, eight-twenty Shawshing Street. One thing I wanted to mention, when we're talking about traffic on thirty-eight, particularly this section from South Street to Shawshing Street, so I live on Shawshing Street, and what we're seeing is a lot of, sort of, a law of unintended consequences when you have traffic that travels now down South Street to Bridge, and that's a terrible intersection. You can't see toward the left coming from Main Street. So, I have a lot of accidents right in front of my house because that's where I live. Um, and we get accidents, you know, pretty much once a week there. Sometimes they're quite serious, actually. So, we're seeing more and more traffic coming that way to avoid going to Shawshing and Main to that, to that one light, and people, and people often go north. So, we're seeing more and more traffic coming on these secondary roads, and I think you're just gonna continue to see more of that if these kinds of projects get approved in this little section because it's so dense, and there's just two lanes, and there's tons and tons of traffic that pour into that section in both directions during rush hours. So, just my two thoughts, my two cents. Thank you.
You?
I'm Smigel, one-nineteen Vernon Street. Um, I just wanna say that this is one developer that's going in opposite Boudros, right? There's another one going in opposite Hafnes. So, if, and that's gonna be like a four-story deal. Don't you think that that's gonna impact traffic horribly? Having two of them go in? This is not gonna be a big one. That's gonna even be bigger. So, I do think the traffic is gonna be bad. It's only a one lane each way.
Anyone else? Only once? Twice? All right. Bring it back to the board. Uh, before I ask the board if, I don't know if the petitioner has anything that they wanna add. If not, I'll just bring it back to the board.
We just want this time. I can just make one comment.
I'm gonna send you up to the podium only because that's how our microphones are working tonight.
Ron Yola, traffic consultant for the project. I, I hear people's concerns about traffic on Main Street and thirty-eight, obviously, because there is a lot of traffic. I know, we did the counts, we did the analysis. And Mr. Chapman is correct that, yes, I mean, this development, with developing individual parcels, and it wouldn't be nice if we collectively take a look at all of them at the same time and do something about it. Unfortunately, it doesn't happen that way because development projects come in over time, one piece at a time. Um, and DOT has no choice but to allow access to projects, because otherwise it would be essentially a taking of product, of the sites. Um, and then DOT looks at the individual projects and how much traffic they're generating. They make a determination on whether or not specific mitigation is required in the form of turn lanes or things like that. But this particular project, the traffic that is being generated is not even close to meeting any kind of warrants for exclusive turn lanes or mitigation elsewhere along with thirty-eight. It's simply a drop in the bucket by comparison to the traffic that's there already. Again, not to diminish how much traffic is there already and the fact that it will add to it. But your own review consultant reviewed our traffic study and agreed with everything. In fact, I don't think there was a single thing that they didn't agree with in the traffic study about the low volume of traffic being generated, the fact that we have plenty of sight lines up and down on thirty-eight so that it can operate safely, and that's the most important thing. Uh, because any delays for traffic trying to get out onto Route Thirty-Eight, guess what? They're gonna be on the driveway. They're not on Route Thirty-Eight. They're not adding to the delays on Route Thirty-Eight. So, those, I just wanted to make that point because there've been a lot of comments made about traffic, and I always feel like, let's talk about what the facts are a little bit as well. Uh, and I understand people have very strong opinions, obviously, about, on traffic, especially when you live in that area. But the facts are what the facts are.
Thank you. All right, so with that, any other comments from anyone on the board? Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. I mean, I will say that, I mean, everything that everyone has stood up and have already been stated, absolutely true. You know, this project came before us, nineteen units. We, we cut it down, we, we adjusted, we moved the building back, we, we moved the commercial building from where it was originally. I'll be the first to admit, I think this, the bill of overlay is, it, it's gonna be addressed in the next round of zoning changes, you know. It, it's where, where the board is in a tough position. Whether we vote for it, uh, we vote against it, um, you know, we are in a tough position, you know. We try, and I'll say this myself, and I'll speak to the other board members. I try and find every single project what's best for the town, you know, and I understand, you know, we, we try and cut the units down, we, we do what we can. You know, believe me, I tell you, I fought with the guy from DOT. I was on the phone for an hour and forty-five minutes. I think he tried to get off multiple times, and, you know, one of his comments is, why are we not trying to get a center lane in town? So, I think that's another option that we need to, you know, we need to push our state delegation. You know, understanding what's happening with Tewksbury, they pushed and it got done in Wilmington. You know, maybe that's the answer. But I think that's the answer coupled with some, um, other zoning changes, and I don't disagree that, you know, developers coming in putting a commercial component. That's the guideline. That's how they're getting around it. You know, I'm just hoping that, I will say, don't be another one of those other developers. Push to get something in there. You know, because I'll be honest, you, you know, you, you come back and try to do, do another project, and you're not, you're just letting that run vacant. It, it, it doesn't look good for you, just leaving it vacant. Work towards trying to get somebody in there. You know, be a good neighbor. Don't just build it and make your money on the residential, and the commercials just, if it happens, it happens. You know, be that good neighbor. Next time you come around, people will be willing to support someone that's trying to really push that commercial economic development. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll serve Mr. Chairman.
I'll say it's Stephen Paul.
All right. Mr. Fowler, I think, is thinking, so I'm gonna give him a second while I say something. You know, I, I appreciate everybody's comment. The one thing I'd like to say, and I don't want this to sound flippant the way I say it. I'm just using it as an example. But I know some of the feeling, maybe it's, it, you know, this is, you know, the comment's kind of, you know, well, this is what the planning board's doing all the time. Please remember, this is our area. This is what we, these are the type of things we hear every meeting, every two weeks. You know, we don't handle liquor licenses, we don't handle, we have a very focused area that we deal with. So, when it seems like this is all we're doing, it's because this is what we do. You know, these are the type of hearings we get. So, we, you know, we, you know, it may seem like it's all we're doing, but it's what we're here for. I, I tried to check. I don't know how many hearings we've had on this, um, for this matter. I, this seemed to be the most we've had in attendance for it, five. So, please, I hope you'll understand, no matter how this turns out, that a lot of work has gone into this review. You know, they didn't come in one night, and they were out the same night, and we were done. You know, they've been back here five times, and between those meetings, there's no less than two weeks typically. Sometimes a lot more, depending on how our breaks and whatnot fall. So, this, this isn't, you know, this isn't something we do, you know, by the seat of our pants, and, you know, we're just like, oh, this, we can just get this out of the way, we can move on to the next thing. What we're presented with are these type of projects. We look at them, we do the best we can with, you know, trying to figure out, I, I mean, I'll say what Mr. Ryder said. While we may disagree on points, I feel like myself, and I won't speak for the other members of the board, but I'll speak about the other members of the board and say, I think everyone here does what they think is right for the town when we make our votes. That's all we can really do. You know, we try to be realistic. We try, at least I try to look at the bigger picture, you know, what's going on in the past, and what can go on in the future. You know, and try to make the best decision I can for each project as it comes before the board. I believe that over the weeks that we've done the hearings on this, that we've tried to do that with this project. You know, any, any thought that, you know, traffic is not something we take into consideration, I hope no one has that, because not only do we ask for the traffic information, we have an independent, um, company that does the review for the town, for us. They're not on anybody else's payroll, they're on our payroll. You know, to tell us if we're missing something, or if there's something that needs to be done, or if the petitioner is giving us, you know, less than accurate information. You know, and that's, that's why we have them, you know? And then we take that information and fold it into everything else. You know, so I just wanna make sure that everybody understands, you know, sometimes, you know, people only, you know, think that these things, that the night they come is the only time, you know, some of the stuff's been discussed. I mean, it starts with a preliminary meeting, and then goes through however many hearings it takes to get to where, you know, we think we're at an end point. I think the petitioner probably thought we were there two or three meetings ago, but, you know, we still had some issues, and, you know, we had to work through them. The last one was the DOT one, um, and it took some more answers, or getting some more answers. You know, we got the answers. They're not necessarily what we would have liked to have heard, but, you know, we waited, we got the answers. I mean, you can't really ask for much more than that. So, you know, again, just my two cents on sort of the process, not necessarily specific to this, uh, this project. Anyone else with anything?
I'll serve Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fowler? No? All right. With that, I will ask the board, what is the pleasure of the board at this time?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the, do we have?
There's waivers.
Waivers, right. They were on the plans, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, first, the waivers as requested. Everybody has their sheet, they're also on the plans.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. So, what is the pleasure of the board on the waivers? Yeah, they're on there. You got one. Yeah.
What are they, one? Three waivers.
We got three. Yep.
I'm making motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the waivers as requested.
All right. Have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify, I'm sorry. Yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Mr. Ryder? I'm, I need a yes or a no. Sorry, shake, okay. All right. So, four to one to approve the waivers as requested. As to the special permit requests, what is the pleasure of the board? Oh, sorry. You do that, though.
Making motion to approve the two-one-three-one special permit, Main Street.
So, special permit, site plan special permit, permit, South Village Ovaly District special permit as submitted with the, the revisions as, as discussed. The one that will be left out is the, getting the final sign-off from the town engineer on the snow storage. So, that's one you'll have to deal with.
Sure.
Okay. Is that?
Yeah.
We'll put it in here. Okay. All right, so, as part of the, we also have the local housing partnership recommendation on December twelfth of the fifteen percent to two units for the affordable housing. So, we'll fold that into the motions, all right? Okay, so with that.
All right, that's a given, right?
I just wanna make sure it's on the record, so. With that, that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? All right, so, all those not in favor?
No. No.
All right, so, three to two. The, uh, site plans, I mean, special permit, site plan special permit, South Village Ovaly District special permit is denied.
Did I make, did I make a comment?
Yeah.
Okay, you made a comment. And, and I understand, we've been around this multiple times, but, um, you know, some, over the last, I don't know, five meetings, we've talked on, not just with this project, but many comments to what's happened, and I, I think at some point, we as a board, or myself, we have to look at what's right for the town. And I, I know it's not always right what the developer wants, but I think at some point, we have to draw a line and say, and say, what can we do? So, that's where I had to stand.
All right.
Chairman, if I may, can the record reflect a reason for the denial? Is there a explanation on, on specific?
I'll be honest with you. We haven't had it come up like this, so I don't know if there's ever been any explanation beyond what, what has been stated, you know, during the hearing. So, there's nothing specific. I mean, I would say, I would say this, and this isn't official or anything else, that the density of the project as it stands, I would presume, is the issue. I, I can't, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know if there's nothing that would be approved there. I, I just, at, at its current state, it, it wasn't approved. I, I don't know how else better to say it than that.
I think you're accurate in your statement, from, from my perspective.
So, I mean, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, again, and again, this isn't a recommendation or anything other than my understanding of it, is that if it were presented again in a different state, it could be brought before the board again, you know, provided the board saw it as different enough from what was presented to this point. But, uh, you know, as it stands, what's presented did not, you know, reach the level of the four-fifths that you need. Again, I, I don't, you know, because I can't, I can't poll the, 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 the members, partly because, you know, it's, it's putting one member or not more on the spot than anybody else, and I'm not gonna do that, so. You know, what's in the record is basically, you know, which I'll have to work off of. Obviously, you know, if you have something different to present, you can always come back in a preliminary again, and we can discuss it. I guess you give more information at that point, but nothing more I can probably add to it at this point, unless anybody else wants to add anything.
That's it.
All right.
I voted.
All right. So, moving on to old business. Do we have any other old business? Seeing no old business. New business? Any new business anyone wishes to discuss? All right? Correspondence? We don't have any correspondence either. So, then Town Planner's Report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to add to the Town Planner's Report, but if anyone has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions on what was?
Yes. And I know you've been in communication with some of the people about the landscaping subjects. I learned to say that the landscaping at, uh, on Woo Street is fine. You know, but that kind of, that's everything, and, and I can understand it now. The ownership, I think with, I and Mr. Delaney went down there, we were looking at the wrong end of the fence. Because the, the fence ended, and, and I see, we wanna go deeper, so.
I see.
So, it was funny. So, because, and it was our fault that if they were gonna landscape in front of that, why did they need a fence there? But it'll, it'll be fine. I understand it. That wasn't why we were gonna talk about. The, uh, the shrubs in the front drove, you know, the fence, and, and, uh, very good. Excellent.
Okay.
They're taller than the fence. I mean, they, they don't, they're not just... I mean, they don't, they're not just a block of color behind the boat, such as the one at the storage unit on Main Street. Those were horrible. Three foot high, scrawny, looks like Charlie Brown's Christmas tree. So I would, as one, would like some more communication with them, because they absolutely are horrendous. Other than that, fine.
So I'll piggyback on Mr. Fowler's comment. I think we left it at one point, we were gonna wait and then make a comment about what they put in. Again, I won't speak for anybody else, but what they put in is just not enough. I mean, it's, it's, what is it, three, four tiny plant-sized trees against that giant wall of a backdrop. It's just simply not enough to, to break up what's there, and, I mean, it's, you know, it's not, it's just not. And I don't know, I'm not gonna get into another Heatherwood thing. I'm not designing somebody's landscaping. They're gonna have to figure out some, you know, some suggestions of what needs to go there. It's, you know, they're the ones who took down what was there. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's on them to come back to us with what they've been, what they're gonna do to make it more palatable, but to me, what's there is not palatable. I don't think, Mr. Fowler thinks it's palatable, uh, palatable. I have a feeling that the other board members don't feel that it's palatable, so.
To go further to say this, the question was asked about, was such and such on the special permit, on some other discussion today? That, those bushes are on the special permit.